Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I love it.
All right, welcome to School Committee. We were in executive session and we are coming out into public session now. We're executive session. We discussed, beginning to discuss the contract negotiators. We're negotiating with all of our associations this year except for the teachers. And tonight was our first executive session to discuss school committee's strategy going into that session, going into negotiations. And I believe Kathy will be beginning those early next year, correct?
Yes, right after the holidays.
Okay. All right.
And there are members of the committee assigned to each bargaining.
Yes. Members of the committee will be working with the superintendent and the director of finance and operations and an administrator on all of those contract negotiations. First item on the agenda is public input. Seeing no one here from the public to provide input, we'll move to our student report. Tonight we have Madison Capzudo. Hi Madison.
Hello. Okay, so today, or tonight rather, I'm going to be updating you on Spirit Week, which took place at the end of last week and is going into this week. Thursday, we had our Boston Sports Day. Friday was Salad Dressing Day, where every grade was assigned a different type of salad dressing and dressed accordingly. So we had the freshmen as peppercorns, so they were to wear black and white. The sophomore students were Greeks, so they came in in togas and like headpieces and laurels. Juniors were ranch, so they came in dressed with cowboy boots and cowgirl hats and that sort of thing. And seniors were Thousand Island, so we had a lot of grass skirts and flowers and leis and Hawaiian shirts and that sort of thing. Today was Merica Monday, so everybody was in red, white, and blue. There was a lot of face paint, a lot of beads. Tomorrow is Class Color Day, which is, you know, the same colors every year. The freshmen are blue, sophomores are red, that could be the other way around. Juniors are dressed in white and seniors are in all black. And then Wednesday, everybody dresses in green and gold for pep rally. The football game, the Thanksgiving football game, will be held at 10:30 a.m. versus Linfield at home this year. Tickets for this game are on sale and are cheaper if you buy them ahead of time as opposed to at the door. There will be shuttles to the middle school available and people can park there, meaning at the middle school and be shuttled down to the high school, seeing as our parking is a little limited for the time being. The VIP seating raffle, which was new to North Reading this year, sponsored by Student Council, will be announced on Wednesday at pep rally. I'm not sure if anybody had mentioned that yet, but we had been selling raffle tickets for a couch side sideline seating with complimentary breakfast and blankets the day of the game, probably some mittens and hand warmers now, because I heard it's going to be really chilly. So that will be announced on Wednesday at pep rally. The Second Annual Winter Ball hosted by the junior class. Tickets for that are on sale, starting today, I believe, for $20 for the freshman and sophomore students. It will be held on December 6th, and this is something that we had started last year. We have a catered dinner in the cafeteria. We do all kinds of balloon decorations and lights. It's really beautiful. So we have a dinner in the caf and then we move the students into the gym for a dance. The Powder Puff Game that is played between the junior and senior girls has been changed from Wednesday afternoon to tomorrow at 4 o'clock. Tickets will be on sale at the door. This is a senior class fundraiser. Student Council had hosted the talent show last Thursday, November 14th. There were great acts and it had a great turnout. The winner was Project 28, which is, or who is, Brian Lee, Richie Gonzalez, and Hannah Laidotes. The Student Council also hosted the Harvest Dance last Friday, or this past Friday rather, was sponsored by Student Council. Good turnout for the dance I went and it was actually really nice, bigger than we've had the last couple of years and some of the changes that have been made into dance protocol and that sort of thing. And I think Ms. Sanino, the Student Council advisor and the officers were pleased with the turnout, so that was good. Last Wednesday, the cheering captains, the football captains, and the band leaders attended the annual luncheon sponsored by the Rotary Clubs of North Reading and Linfield at the Hillview Country Club. The NEMASK, which is the Northeastern Massachusetts Association of Student Councils Fall Conference, was held on November 14th at Amesbury High School. The cheerleaders attended the regional competition. We came in sixth place. On Friday, student athletes went to the MIAA Sportsmanship Conference at Gillette Stadium. And winter sports are commencing this week and into next week. So that's the student report. And then for student work, I brought a few copies of an activity that I had just completed in my AP Psychology class. Everything that we are studying in AP Psychology is just a broader expansion of everything that is offered in the Introduction to Psychology course at the high school. So we go, I would, I don't know if it's easier to say faster or slower than we do in intro because we definitely cover a lot more details than we do in intro, but we do move a lot quicker at the same time. So this is an activity on operant conditioning, which is a method developed by B.F. Skinner. And so I had to come up with some sort of hypothetical situation in which I was to operantly condition either a member of my family, or a pet, or an animal of some sort. And so I chose to condition hypothetically, I didn't actually do it. I want to, I just didn't have the actual time, to condition my little brother to limit his computer usage. Because he's on there quite a bit. He's in sixth grade this year and it's like all of a sudden, he found like computer games online and it's just a nightmare sometimes when I'm trying to do homework. So I had to outline some of the, you can pass these around. Sorry about the ink, I'm out of black, so it's kind of an ugly green color. But I had to outline some of the methods that I was going to use in terms of like positive reinforcement, negative reinforcement, different types of punishments, and explain some of the outcomes that could potentially come from doing this activity. So maybe over the weekend I'll try it, or over Christmas break, when I have some free time on my hands, I'll actually try it.
That's a good idea.
And that's all.
Any questions for Madison?
Wow, you're going to bribe him with candy, huh?
I think I'm going to. He might, the thing is, he's very, very smart. He's very, very smart. Smarter than your average 11-year-old and I think he might outsmart me, because that's very, I don't think he'll do it for just like a piece of, a piece of candy, or I don't think he's afraid of going to his room anymore, so I don't know how well it will work, but...
I actually have a question for you not related to what we reported tonight. So with the school building project proceeding quickly, I'm just wondering what kind of, like, do you sense excitement within the school population now, or is it something that kids talk about a lot?
I would say for sure, because I'm not even going to be in the building and I can't wait to walk through it and see it when it's all done. We practice for cheerleading at the middle school where they have all the posters hanging up and I can't wait. I think it's beautiful. I think that, seeing how quickly it's gone up, just from like over the summer, I remember going for cheerleading practices and just the framework was up. And now driving in and seeing all the brickwork done and the windows going in, it's happening so fast and there is, for sure, a lot of buzz.
So most of the kids know that it's up there.
Uh-huh. Yeah, yeah. Hard to miss.
Thirteen months.
Yeah.
That's how much we need to...
Yeah, a lot of buzz.
It's crazy. Great.
I just wanted to emphasize too, again, the game Thursday morning at 10:30, very competitive game. We have an excellent team this year. And we happen to have the leading scorer in Eastern Massachusetts, C.J. McCarthy, has scored more points than any other player in Eastern Massachusetts. So I think dress warm and get as many people out there as you can. Get those kids out there.
We will.
Fill those stands, all right?
We will, we will.
Well, now I'll say the team, it's a tribute to their attitude, they could have just folded their tent when they didn't make the state tournament.
They played very well last winter games.
And they've come out and they've demolished everybody they've played since they didn't make the tournament.
They have.
So, great effort. And we always like to beat Linfield and Linfield's only lost once this year.
Yeah.
So, they're nine and one, so it'd be good to take them out. Any other questions for Madison?
No, this is great, Madison.
Thank you.
Thanks Madison.
Thanks.
Do you want to move to Patrick next, or do you want to go to the MSBC?
Patrick.
Okay. Next, we have our regular guest tonight. We have Dr. Patrick Daly and he's going to give us an update on Common Core curriculum standards.
Thank you, everyone. I want to apologize in advance, I'm still thawing out, I was at Gillette Stadium.
Oh, and you're tired as well. Did you stay? Did you stay?
Yeah.
I wanted to take you in back home. Some people stay.
I took the train, which is a great way to do it.
Oh.
And did they hold the train? Because...
They did.
Yeah, I was going to say, if they didn't hold the train, there'd be a lot of people standing there waiting to get home this morning.
So you walked home.
Yeah.
So, tonight I'm just doing an update on Common Core and I've included a little bit about the PARC assessment, which as we know is the assessment that could possibly be replacing MCAS in Massachusetts and possibly in other states. And I thought this would be, sometimes as we talk in education, it's good to start with the end in mind and to be able to see. So maybe if we see the assessments, it'll help us understand a little bit better the standards that they're assessing. So this is an overview. I presented a very similar presentation, just on the math part of it, to elementary last Wednesday. It was very well attended by parents from all three elementary schools. Our math leaders there were there, as well as our three elementary principals. We had a lot of good questions and discussion that followed. So, very quickly, why would we change? As we know, there's a shift to the Common Core standards, mathematics and English Language Arts. I just remembered I have, this can pass out, I'm sorry. He's got a different one. Let me just swap the pages. So we have a change to the 2011 frameworks, which were adopted in Massachusetts in 2010. The Common Core offers us opportunities for in-depth student learning. In mathematics, there's a real focus on math practices and content. In English Language Arts, there's a focus on not only English Language Arts, but also literacy across the curriculum. For many, many years, we've talked about interdisciplinary reading and writing. These standards make it part of what's expected for science and social studies especially, but also in other subject areas. It's an opportunity for us to improve scores on standardized tests and all kinds of assessments for all of our students. And there are changes to our assessments, and so we should consider, we need to change how we're teaching because we're being changed how we measure. And again, those measurements are designed to align to the new standards. So an overview of some of the shifts in our Common Core mathematics. There's an increased focus, and I'll talk about this a little more in a few minutes, but there's a focus on specific topics at grade level. One of the criticisms of the testing world that we've lived in for a while is that we're trying to cover everything. Cover everything in order to prepare for the test. Part of the idea behind Common Core is that there is less coverage, more teaching to depth, of fewer items, but a real focus on what's most essential at grade level before students move on from there.
Patrick, can I ask you a question about that?
Yes, absolutely.
Because I've been reading about that and trying to understand it. So does that mean that students will be learning some math functions and topics later than they do now? So they won't have an introduction to X, Y, Z in grade three, because we're not covering everything in grade three, but they'll get that in grade four, grade five? Is that how it's going to work? Because I'm trying to understand it.
Sure. There's a shuffling of some items, I'll skip ahead to this for a minute, but these are your most, these are the most essential. And so instead of us spending equal amounts of time on different topics and trying to cover as many topics, we're going to go really deep into addition, subtraction in K2, multiplication, division in 3, 5 ratios, and proportional reasoning in 6, up to linear algebra in the grade eight curriculum. And so the idea being that, some things did move, some things moved up, some things moved down, things shifted around a little bit, but it's just the idea that, and this kind of speaks to the coherence, that everything builds. There's a lot of metaphors in Common Core about staircase. What builds from here that builds to there? So maybe you're still being exposed to things early on and there's, the way the standards are set up is there's the most essential, those focus standards, and then there's those supporting standards. And those are what I think you're referring to. They're still taught, they're still important, and it's, not only is it taught, but it's emphasized through the teaching, that this is going to help you when you get to third grade or fourth grade and that real understanding of where this is leading to.
Okay.
At the teacher level, student level, and also the parents, to start communicating that a lot more to see how they build. There's clarity within the standards. All the standards in mathematics have 10 standards and eight standards for mathematical practice. And so, and there's, that progression that I talked about is easy to see because standard four will relate to standard four in third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, and you'll see that clarity as you move up. And with rigor, I know I talked about this last year with you folks, it's not just, doesn't just mean harder. It means an increase in the fluency, an increase in the kind of questions and the kind of deep conceptual understanding. It's not just regurgitation, it's a deep understanding. And then application. As we know, it's very important for students to be able to apply what they learn to real world problems. And that idea of, if you look at most textbooks, the way they're set up, at the end of the lesson is when you get to some of the word problems and the real world problems. The idea of being able to do that right from the beginning and maybe even starting with that idea and thinking about how does this apply to the real world and working backwards. So that's a lot of what's embedded into our thinking with this. With ELA, an overview, there is a balance of literary and informational text. We hear a lot about, you know, we're not teaching the classics anymore. I can assure you, the classics are still very much embedded in what we teach. Creative writing is very much embedded in what we teach. Even some of the criticisms you hear for National Common Core, Massachusetts was very careful, they would not go back from where they were, they preserved so many things. And there's a lot of standards in Massachusetts that are plus standards. So it's Common Core plus a few things that they've kept and added in there. But there is a balance of the literary and the informational text, especially at the early grades, there's a lot of a focus on narrative. And now there's more of a focus on being able to follow directions, give directions, read charts, graphs, and other informational texts. The complexity of text is addressed. We want our students to be able to address complex texts, to be able to address text-based answers. So in both multiple choice and in their writing, and writing to text is important as well, students will not be writing separate and distinct from a reading passage. They're writing right now on MCAS, they may, you know, at the sophomore year, when they take their MCAS test, they may be recalling a book that they've read in the past, whereas in the future, if we have the PARC assessments, there will be a focus on reading not only one passage, but maybe multiple passages, drawing from those passages, comparing, contrasting them. And those passages might also, it might be two passages in a video or two passages in an interactive chart of a DNA sequence or something, and trying to draw conclusions from multiple sources. And then also the academic vocabulary, really learning the language of the disciplines and being able to read those, that vocabulary and use that vocabulary in written responses. So these are some of the major shifts. These are your Common Core state standards. These are the states that have adopted Common Core across the United States. And there's a lot in the news now about states challenging PARC and changing. People aren't, states to my knowledge are not backing out of Common Core at this time. They're not even really backing out of PARC, but they're backing out of, or they're questioning some of the field testing and some of the costs associated with it.
Yeah, Florida's, Florida's been quite vocal about it.
Yes. And that's at the political level, at the national, at the, at the political level. But as far as at the educational level, it'll be interesting to see how that, how that plays out. But you can see that this is something that many states are going through. And there's, you know, there's advantages and disadvantages, but there's a lot of advantages at the higher education level. When students graduate and go to schools throughout our country and throughout the world, they have all agreed, an agreed upon set of standards that all those students from all those schools have met. So the Massachusetts framework incorporates Common Core state frameworks, and I've drawn a few slides here from a presentation that I was at recently at the STEM Summit to bring in with you, to share with you tonight, from some of the PARC fellows that are part of this. The standards are written to ensure the students have a knowledge for college and career-ready in a global world. And so I wanted to share just a few assessment items. This is, these are slowly coming out and this is helpful for us to see. So the PARC assessment, unlike our current MCAS assessment that has our ELA testing in March, April, and our math testing in May, there are two different parts of the testing in the year. So you have a performance-based assessment, which is in the earlier part, the March, April kind of window, and then the end of year, which is in later in the May and a little bit into June part of the year. And there's different pieces of this. So for the English Language Arts, you have a performance-based assessment. This would include a literary analysis, a narrative task, and a research simulation. There's also an end-of-year assessment that would include opportunities for students to read and comprehend complex texts. And part of the idea here is the PBA's take more time, they take more time to take and also to assess. That's why that's given earlier. The end-of-year can be done, multiple choice, and can be turned around more quickly. So they do hope to get us some of the data back a little bit more timely fashion than currently with MCAS. So here are a few examples of some of the PARC assessment questions. This is a comprehension instructive response. So students would read a passage about the Statue of Liberty, they would respond to about 10 multiple choice questions, and then the students are asked a question like this. Based on the passage, explain why the Statue of Liberty is important to the people of the United States. Support your answer with important details from the passage. So it's not just drawing on their experiences or narrative items, this is asking students to read and respond to what they've just read. This is sort of interesting and our teachers are digging deep into this right now to think about ways of instructing this. And what this is trying to get at is some higher-order thinking skills through a multiple choice. So here's an example. Students read an excerpt from Eliza's Cherry Trees, Japan's Gift to America, and students are going to be asked a Part A question, which says, "Which statement best describes how the events in paragraphs 13 through 15 are related to each other?" So the students have to choose A, B, C, and D. So this type of question you might see on a current assessment, but here's what's a little bit different. You're going to then have a Part B. And now you have to say, "Which sentence from the article best supports the answer in Part A?" So students, this is a similar skill that the students would be using in their own writing, but they're now able to do this through a multiple choice scenario. So it's not only guessing the Part A question, which, you know, we all know test-taking, you can eliminate certain questions and you could guess, but now you actually have to back up why you chose the one in the former. So it's, it gets to more of that depth of an understanding than current assessments will get at. And here's a little bit more of this. So now they're also going to read a second passage entitled "The Peanut Man" about George Washington Carver. And now there's a question, "You've read two texts, two texts by famous people in American history who solved a problem working to make a change. Write an article for your school newspaper describing how Eliza and Carver faced challenges to change something in America. So in your article, be sure to describe in detail why some solutions they tried worked and others do not. Tell how the challenges each one faced were the same and how they were different." So there's an opportunity for the student to be creative, to develop a skill of writing for a school newspaper, but they're still drawing on facts. It's not, they're not making this up out of thin air or from experience, they're needing to go back to what they've learned and relate it together from two passages. So it's a rigorous task and it's one that we need to be practicing even more in our classrooms. So what is this measure? It measures the type, the levels of text that students can read, the text complexity, their ability to grasp main ideas, the accuracy, and also can they find and utilize explicit and implicit evidence to support their text? So what evidence are they able to gather? And this is good too, I was saying this earlier. This slide shows you what stays the same. So the assessment and its ability to find the main idea and supporting details, the accuracy, and the assessment's ability, of ability to use explicit, implicit evidence in a text to support an argument, the evidence. But what's going to change through the grade levels is that complexity of text as they move up. I just pulled one piece. This is an example of a research-based question. So this, for this assignment, this is seventh grade. Students read two different selections on Amelia Earhart, and then they watch a video on Amelia Earhart. And they have to make, they have to draw conclusions from both articles and the video as well. So this is another similar example of multiple questions followed up by, and you'll see there's actually, I had to make it smaller, this, all the way through F, where the student has to choose, you know, which two pieces of evidence best support the answer to Part A. So they really need to be able to back up their thinking with more detail and more, more thinking. And here is the question that they would have to write to. "You have read two texts and watched a video, all three include information that supports the claim that Earhart was daring courageous person. Here are the three texts. Consider the argument each author uses to demonstrate her bravery, and then write an essay that analyzes the strengths of the arguments related to Earhart's bravery in at least two of the texts. Remember to use textual evidence to support your ideas."
Okay, I need to ask you a question.
Yes.
I've seen some MCAS questions.
Yep.
This seems far more complex.
Yes.
Far more rigorous.
Yes.
I'll be the most shocked person in the world if Massachusetts scores don't plummet on these tests. That's all. That's, it's not a question, I guess it's a statement.
It's going, it's going to be very, and again, you hear sometimes about the rigor. This is, this is very, very, very rigorous.
It is very rigorous.
It's involved.
The third grade one is...
I've been in third grade for pretty years.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, that's amazing to me, the level of stuff. I'm not saying that third graders shouldn't be doing that, but what I'm saying is, they haven't been doing that, and they're going to be asked to do that this year on the, what are we calling it? Trial pilot.
Gradual.
And then, even though the commissioner's pretending we're not going to adopt this, in two years when we adopt this, they're going to be asked to do this. We have two years to start teaching our kids to be...
Yeah.
A heck of a lot more.
It's true.
One of the things that comes to my mind immediately is somebody's going to have to score these.
Yes.
It looks to me like it's going to be quite subjective in that analysis, like all over the lot.
But that's true of all essay questions. I mean, regardless of where you take them. It's true of your writing samples for your law school aptitude test or your Byron and all that stuff.
In some ways, this might be, because it needs, you know, when you're scoring the writing, they will be able to look for, you know, is the student using evidence to support? What evidence are they using? Is it, you know, and so it'll be a little less objective than some of the open responses they have now. That's the argument.
It's going to take a lot of teamwork to do that scoring.
It does. It is, it is a process. But the, the current assessments do have a lot of writing on them as well. But this is, so I do agree, more rigorous, we're practicing this. Now, one of the things that's very important, as I said earlier, it's literacy, it's not just English Language Arts. So this is being practiced in your social studies classes, in your science classes as well, because it's not all just on your language arts teacher or your English teacher in middle school or high school to be covering some of these topics. And frankly, it's the content area expertise, to talk about Amelia Earhart, to talk about DNA, or to talk about biology, it's really the content area teachers that are actually the most well-versed in that, reading and writing.
So I don't...
So we're working together.
I don't know what test they took. I think it's New York and Kentucky, where they had tremendously lower results than the past. Is that because they have rushed into this? Or, I mean, why did we see those scores go down so much in those states?
Yeah. I'm, I'm not exactly sure what the reasoning is. I think in a lot of states, Massachusetts has gone a little bit slow and steady. They've stepped back a little bit. And they're letting us learn from some of the, you know, New York, for example, really jumped on a few things. And they've got a lot of great resources that we're also using, but I think we've seen some of those, some of those missteps and some of those scores have gone down in some areas. I do think that our scores will be consistent here, I do. It'll be very interesting to see, but we are, we've been working on this for many years and really working on this. But this, we're starting now to really get into the different kinds of questions and we're really preparing, because these are, you know, and in some ways that's good because we have been conditioned to do MCAS-style writing or MCAS, and it's really good reading and writing. So it's, this will be a shift, but I think the teachers, once they see this, and this is why these, as these examples are coming out like I'm showing you tonight, it's really helpful in us as we're planning our instruction.
I guess we're not going to see the scores on the pilot anyway, so we won't...
You will not.
We won't know.
This is the mathematics. So similar to ELA, you're going to have a performance-based assessment earlier in the year and an end-of-year assessment. There are three types of tasks. There are three types of tasks. There are Type 1, which tasks that assess concepts, skills, and procedures. Type 2 tasks which assess expressing mathematical reasoning. And Type 3 that assess modeling and applications. So the Type 1 task, there'll be some of that in the performance-based assessments earlier in the year, and then there'll be, all of those end-of-year questions will be tasks that address concepts, skills, and procedures. More fluency, computation, doing some of the problems that way. So earlier in the year, you'll get some questions that are a little bit different. And let me show you those. I spoke to this a little bit earlier about the focus, the coherence, and the rigor. These were our mathematical practice standards. So again, it's not just the content standards, but it's also how our students think. And so mathematically proficient students do the following. They make sense of problems and persevere in solving them. They reason abstractly and quantitatively. They construct viable arguments and critique the reasoning of others. They model with mathematics. They use appropriate tools strategically. They attend to precision. They look for and make use of structure. And they look for and express regularity in repeated reasoning. I'm just going to show you a few minutes of this video if it plays. And these are some resources that we're able to share with our educators. I can hear that I will stop.
There's a chance my computer's muted.
My hearing's not that good.
It's not muted.
It may be a cliff gate here.
It wasn't before though.
...is when we're using really specific language and it's very clear and very easy to follow our thinking. So students are not only seeking to find surface area, but they're also sort of reflecting on, are they being precise in their language? Are they being precise in their calculations? And are they being precise in how they communicate the problem solve in practice?
Precision means like the right, the right place or...
You know, it means that you're accurate, which is a synonym for right. And it means that you're specific. Now, with the practice standards, it, I think is an opportunity to reflect more purposefully on how am I directly tying this into instruction and planning? To find the surface area of a complex figure, we must use blank. Hmm, what do you think Fernando?
I think precision.
How do y'all feel about that? Now, Yoli, I totally agree. I'm very precision. I would like us to write precision as class. Precision.
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah.
Which means our math work is accurate.
Oh, how do you feel about that? Which means our math is accurate. I underestimated us. I'm very impressed with your precision of language. And within there, where I chose to really zoom in on is that specify units accurately. Being a stickler, so not just saying thirty-four, but thirty-four inches. Here's a simple shape. It's quadrilateral. How do I find the area of it? Let's show you. Fernando?
I think actual goal, four inches.
Thanks for being precise, okay? Times four inches.
Plus three.
Plus three what?
Plus three centimeters square.
Thank you. Well, is it inches though?
I mean, it's...
It's just such a nice natural tie-in to surface area.
Plus five eight times...
Eight what? Eight, it's okay, you're, you're so close. Eight centimeters times six centimeters. So let's write it down. Can I write it down? Can I write it on paper?
Right here.
Thank you ma'am. Times six centimeters. And what's our product?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight what? I'm trying.
So forty, the product is forty-eight centimeters.
Centimeters.
Square.
Beautiful. I know it's important for my students to be precise in their calculations and in their communication. But I haven't until today actually asked them to focus themselves and to use some metacognition around the ideas of precision. Why is precision important in this? Mari and Chris?
Precision is important in this because it's one of the main things in the...
Tell me more about that though.
Okay.
Yeah, take some think time. Chris, well, can I, is it okay if I let Chris, because I did say I was going to go to him? Is that cool?
It's also important because if you just make one mistake, it could ruin your whole double problem and that's what happened to me in check for mastery because instead of adding, I multiplied and that's what got me kind of confused the first time.
Yeah. So precision is important in terms of being accurate, for sure. I think what you saw today is saying to students, I want you to focus on precision. That is our focus together. Precision?
Precision.
Precision. Really naming that focus for students and shifting the responsibility to them is something that, with Common Core, that is newer to my classroom.
The actor is thirty-seven centimeters.
It seems too late.
No, no.
They are. It's terrible.
I don't like that.
I think we give the...
I think it's a great thing.
What's with the signals?
I'm going to give her one.
She's good.
She's that kind of teacher who would drag me toes.
Oh, yeah, I know. Yeah. I appreciate it.
I don't get the signals, but anyway.
I'd be loved. Silent signals. I'd be detention all the time.
This is California, right?
Yeah. Let's just say that, yeah.
So I think that underscores a few things. One is that college and career ready, what does that mean? It means that when colleges and careers, we're talking about how we're doing nationally to educate our students, students will come to college and taking more remedial courses. Students were getting into careers and they weren't prepared. They were looking for direct instruction. What do I need to do? Tell me what you need me to do. And what colleges and careers said was, we can teach the content, we want the students to come in knowing the skills and the practices, the deep thinking that needs to happen there. And I think we've all experienced that, you know, am I, am I wrong on this test because I didn't write inches or I didn't write centimeters, like because I was told I had to do it? Or because I really understood how important it is to get those numbers and those, that correct, you know, to change that? So that's, that's what this is. So part of our instruction is actually now incorporating these different aspects of our math practice right into our instruction. So videos like that are helpful for our teachers to understand a different approach for, for parents and for students as well, to have some, this is, you know, some of the major shifts in our instruction. So again, this is why they're so important. With technological advances, because of the internet, students are prepared to complete and compete in a global economy. People are no longer migrating to the United States to have the best jobs. Our students need the knowledge and skills required to compete with these other nations. And this is from, this is from the Park assessment.
I was going to say, I disagree with that statement. I can't believe I want to disagree with that statement.
I'm just, I'm putting these in here on purpose to share with you what, what, what we're being shared. This is a question that comes up quite often. Is this a race to the middle? And so this is the question. No, although Massachusetts is the top achieving state in the nation, we also have some of the largest achievement gaps in the nation. More rigorous standards mean more rigorous assessments. The new standards are challenging the conventional way of teaching and learning to include much more rigorous tasks that demonstrates students' thinking.
See, now, I would argue, here's the problem. And I don't mean I don't care about Massachusetts. I don't care about Massachusetts. I care about North Reading. I care about how have our kids been prepared when they have gone to college? How have they done? How have they done after college? And this is the problem in my, my assessment of the problem, is this is not, I know it's not one-size-fits-all, but it's too much one-size-fits-all for my liking. Because I think we have, and some of our surrounding districts do an outstanding job. And I am just concerned that we're going to change something that we've been doing very effectively and possibly, I'm not saying we're going to be, possibly be less effective or as effective, but just doing it a different way. So that's, that's my main concern.
That's, that would be the concern that I would have as well. I think with all standards, it's just, if you're, if you're doing it to comply, if you're doing it to pass a test or to teach to the test or something like that, that's the problem. I think our philosophy in North Reading and in high achieving districts is usually, we're going to teach students to be good thinkers. We're going to teach them to be creative. We're going to teach them to be good readers and writers and good students practicing math. We're going to educate the whole student. We're going to make them well-rounded. And the byproduct of all that good education, they're going to do well on these standardized assessments.
Okay, but if they do well on the standardized assessment, how do we measure whether or not they were actually college-ready when they got to college or whether or not they were career-ready, a job-ready? We don't, do we do anything to measure that to see? I mean, it's one thing to, you know, take the standardized test and to do well on them. But it's, I'm curious as to when our kids from North Reading leave to go to college, how are they doing? How are they, are they ahead of or behind other, you know, students or freshmen that are going to college?
The data that is available to us is students that go into state colleges.
That's all.
And there's, there's data, there's data that, you know, one thing that's promised with this is that there's currently a test that needs to be taken by students to see whether they need remediation.
Right.
Part of the promise with Park is that that test, taken in eleventh grade now instead of tenth, could be used in place of an Accuplacer test. So that would be another indicator, you know, if, and if that holds up, right now the colleges are signing off on that, but if that holds up, that would be another indicator. We'll see. That's, that's what's, that's what's being promised. But I left these in there on purpose. I know they're a little controversial, but I did want to speak a little bit to some of the shifts in math. So here is a previous math standard. Exhibit an under, this is grade four. Exhibit an understanding of the base ten number system by reading, modeling, writing, and interpreting whole numbers to at least a hundred thousand, demonstrating an understanding of the values of the digits and comparing and ordering the numbers. Also round whole numbers through one hundred thousand to the nearest ten, one hundred, one thousand, ten thousand, and one hundred thousand. Here's a typical question, I'm going to skip ahead to this, that we may have seen on an MCAS example. What is eight thousand six hundred fourteen rounded to the nearest thousand? So again, it's a question that has a multiple choice. You would give an answer. Here's the shift with the new statement. So it's, and think, think of the verbs that you see here that's a little different. So generalize place value understanding for multi-digit whole numbers. Read and write multi-digit whole numbers using base ten numerals, number names, and expanded form. Compare two multi-digit numbers based on meanings of the digits in each place using greater than, equal to, and less than symbols to record the results of comparisons. The other standard would be use place value understanding to round multi-digit whole numbers to any place. So this was the MCAS question. Here is a Park question. And the picture here is of a baseball stadium. It says, baseball stadiums have different numbers of seats. Drag the tiles to arrange the stadiums from least to greatest number of seats. And it says, San Francisco Giants Stadium, Washington Nationals, San Diego Padres. And you physically use a mouse or your finger to drag those and put them into order. And my first reaction to that was, all right, that's a little bit easier than, than the other skill, you know? But this is Part A. Here's Part B. Compare these statements from two students. Jeff said, I get the same number when I round all three numbers of seats in these stadiums. Sarah says, when I round them, I get the same number for two of the stadiums, but a different number for the other stadium. Could Jeff and Sarah both be correct? Explain how you know. And now students are actually typing. I get this question a lot. They'd be typing on the computer or handwriting out a response to this question.
Is the answer that if you compare it to the hundreds, four thousands, that's how you get different?
Thousands.
Okay. Pretty smart on this committee.
The third, the third question, now there's also Part C. When rounding to the nearest hundred, the number of seats in Ace's baseball stadium is nine thousand one hundred. What is the greatest number of seats that could be in this stadium? Explain how you know.
Ninety-one forty-nine.
So you're going to, exactly. So you're going to go up to forty-nine. And that's the idea of rounding down, you know? So there, there's a lot of different, but this is, this is really measuring that transfer skill. Can a student understand how that would work in, in an actual stadium? And there are common mistakes that students might make that would show a limit to their conceptual understanding. So this is interesting, very different approach, different types of questions that you see here. So just a little bit of a wrap-up here. Here's some of the shifts, again, that we talked about. We have new standards and frameworks that are in place, possibly changing assessments. We've talked a lot about the field test. Here's, here's what it looks like though, for grades three to eight and grade ten. Last year was a near full implementation of Common Core, meaning what was tested last year were the standards that were common to both the old frameworks and the new. This year for grades three to eight, we have a full implementation of the Common Core framework in schools and districts for mathematics. And we have full implementation in grades three through ten for English Language Arts. For next year, for two thousand fourteen fifty, there's a full implementation of Common Core in all schools and districts for all grades as well. In two thousand thirteen fourteen, we're at a hundred percent alignment this year. In the elementary schools, we're using Everyday Math, which was the text series we're using in elementary, but we're using it with a different Common Core-aligned scope and sequence. So our teachers have been through a tremendous amount of training and work to, to make this Common Core scope and sequence for the best for our students. We're piloting some unit and trimester assessments. We're working with many other districts in our SEEM collaborative. We're all doing this work together. That's the good part of all being in the same place. We're able to share ideas and materials and resources and professional development and many other aspects with other districts in the area. There is a tremendous amount of professional development needed for our, our teachers, teaching math in a different way, as you see, thinking about things in a different way, and supporting some of the content knowledge for, especially for our elementary teachers who, who are of course tasked with being experts in so many different areas. There are model curriculum units coming out from the Department of Education, which we're incorporating into our teaching. These are units that are designed to give us, you know, they're designed by teachers, they're not perfect, but they're designed to show us new approaches possibly to instruction. And exploring all the resources that are out there figuring out what's aligned. We still are getting directed from the state and federal government and, and Departments of Education that there is no textbook series necessarily that's ready to go. A lot of these textbook companies slapped Common Core-aligned on the cover. And so we are using all the resources that are out there. There's changes still coming. We don't even know what the assessments really look like yet. There's going to be a lot of change. So at this time, our educators are really using multiple resources to, to prepare for their lessons. And I just want to point this out to the committee because I, I shared it with the parents. You hear a lot about, well, when is the report card going to change? Especially at the elementary school, we have a standards-based report card. And we're in agreement that it, it will change when these changes are, are in place, but it's the last piece we want to change. We want to make sure we get everything else in, very solid before we start making those changes. But there are some changes to the, the skills that are not assessed in different trimesters because with this new scope and sequence with Common Core, there were some things that we may not have covered early in the year that now we are covering and vice versa. So there are some changes and this is part of why we presented to the parents the other night. We have a fully, fully aligned three to eight this year. And next year, beginning next year, there's a possibly new assessments. You know, again, we're field testing Park this year. There's a possibility of, of having Park or MCAS next year. And the following year after that, we will be very clear on what assessments the state is choosing to, to implement. We had some questions along the way. I'm not sure if there's any questions here at the committee.
Any questions or comments from the committee? I'll make a few more, of course. I guess one question is, I see more tests that equates to more time testing to me. Okay, so against that. Other concern is technology. Are we, are we up to speed technologically where we can offer these tests when we need to, to everybody in the schools with the technology that we have?
Yeah. So the, the first question about time on testing, I think it's, it's definitely a concern. We do not want to be spending all of our time taking the tests. We need to be teaching and learning. And I think that's something that's very important to be considered. There is more with the end of the year and the project base, there's more testing as a part of this piece. There are also formative assessments along the way. What I'm, what I'm optimistic about, what I'm hoping is, right now it's, we have our classroom assessments that give us data and then we have our imposed sort of state mandated testing. I'm hoping that there can be more of a synthesis in the future where we can really use those tests and get the data back more timely so that we can use them as a part of our regular cycle of assessments. Because we are assessing all the time in our classrooms. And so if, the more that we can work towards getting that data back and making it useful in the classroom, as opposed to just something that comes out every September or October and it's sort of an official release from the state. If we can get that data more quickly, and that's what they're promising, at least, with formative assessments, with the practice, the performance-based, and the end-of-year. Quicker turnarounds and more information. But it's definitely a concern of ours as well. We know the most important thing is for them to be in the classroom learning and not in the classroom, or in the computer lab, in this case, taking tests. To answer the second question, we have been, for several years, I'm putting my technology director hat on. Park has been having us do a readiness assessment, to see how many devices we have in the district that are appropriate for these assessments. They have to meet certain qualifications, speed, we have to test our network, and we've been running several tests. As I've told the superintendent, I've reported that we are in need of more devices. We are. We need more money to get more devices. We absolutely are. I think if pressed, though, we could definitely do one grade level at each school. The computer labs in each building, at the very least, could handle this. The problem, then, becomes with the scheduling. You can't have everybody in the classroom on the same day, so then you're spreading out, you're testing over multiple days, which is similar to what we do now. My concern, though, is because of the security of this with the bandwidth, you're not able to use the technology for all the other wonderful things we try to use our technology for, because we're concentrating our resources on test security, because you can't have the bandwidth compromised during the testing. And that's definitely a concern that I've raised and the superintendent's raised. We've also mentioned many times that assuming that just because we have the technology doesn't mean the students know how to use the technology.
Right, that's the second.
Never mind the stress and anxiety we all feel when we sit down to take a test. Now add to that that you have to know how to find, I mean, if you've tried to use a new version of Office, you can't find, where's that dropdown window?
Right.
Where's the spell check? And you're gonna have to make those adjustments. So you need to not only have the technology and to use it, you need to practice it authentically to use, you know, it's the tools. I used to say this in another district. We had the English Language Learner students using second-language dictionaries, and they were sacred, and we left them in a locked cabinet, and we didn't bring them out until the test day. And then the kids didn't know how to use them. It's a tool.
Right.
It's, you know, so we have to do the same thing. If they're gonna use an iPad or a computer-based assessment, especially our special-needs students who have accommodations built in, they're gonna need to practice with these all the time.
See, the issue with the technology is, they, this means to me that students that are taking the test need to be using technology during class periods.
All the time.
And working, and we don't have that. And I guess what angers me is that the DESE continues to blow this off and say, oh, there's some program out there, they're talking about some program, you'll find the money. The money's not there, unless we get it from the state. And so, and the other thing I've read is if we don't have the technology, it's gonna be a little more difficult to take the test with paper and pencil. The final comment I'll make is, I guess I'm really object to the whining, to the comments of Commissioner Chester, Secretary of Education Duncan, basically saying they don't want to hear the whining from the superintendents and the school committees and the parents. I'm whining because I still want to understand why our students in North Reading have to make this change, and why everything is being controlled from the federal and state level. I guess that's what my whining's about. If they can show me that, well, geez, North Reading students are really struggling when they go to college, then show me. No one has shown me that. I can look at my personal life, I can look at the children of people on this committee, I can look, no one has shown me that.
That's anecdotal, and you need to get.
But that's my biggest issue, is that no one has said, "North Reading kids are failing when they go to college. We need to change." I guess that's my biggest issue. I don't know, any other way to put it?
And in a sense, too, if we really are trying to eradicate gaps, and, you know, we care about gaps internally, because we have plans in place to address some of the gaps we've already identified. Assessments will tell you one part of the story, but for true gaps, there are other factors that are socioeconomic.
Right.
There are things that you just can't change. Students' poverty status, or the situation at home, all of these different factors affect. Even a personality type affects your ability to take tests. Creative types are screwed in a lot of these tests.
Yes.
Because they don't think this way, and we are making a lot of assumptions, I think, to an average, yet understanding that there are many, many gaps. And North Reading, we care about every single student and tailoring the experience to make sense for their own learning. That's very evident to me in all the curriculum choices we've made, and we've talked to about, you know, obnazion in this committee. I feel like we are, the teaching-to-the-test thing, it's not teaching to the test, it's teaching to expectations and political aspirations of all these different groups.
I agree.
And the local control, it's not about local control, it's about local flexibility in order to be able to really help students achieve. Student achievement, to me, is not talked about. When I tweet to Artie Duncan, because I have a lot of choice words I've sent to him over the last, you know, year or two, you know, this is just, there's an evangelism going on that I don't completely understand, but I do know that our district, Comer, Howard, or Iwater, will make sure that students achieve, because they are, and they're successful. We are figuring that out. Our kids go to really top schools, and those that choose other career types, they are achieving in their lives, they stay here, they come back to North Reading, we know about them. We have a lot of success cases. We also know we have a lot of work to do. So to me, all of this is a bunch of stuff we have to check off in terms of compliance. You guys are doing a great job trying to make that possible. And the feedback that we'll be sharing to the state, you better believe it, after this is over, and continues to be different every year, super. I think will be eye-opening. So, well done.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, you know, mean to say that we have a perfect school system, because nobody does. And I also know, in addition to closing the gaps in our own district, we need to close the gaps in the state. But I just don't think it's being approached in the 100% right way. And as Karen said, and we've all talked about it on this committee, if you live in a community like North Reading where your parents care about education, the kids are gonna, for the most part, do really well in school and beyond North Reading. And if you live in a community where the parents don't care, you can do everything you want with the curriculum, with the testing, it's not gonna matter. And that might sound cynical, but I think that's basically what it comes down to. Kid goes to school on an empty stomach, and his parents don't care when he brings home his homework and whether he does it or not.
Or aren't able to provide.
Alright, alright. So, anyway. Kathy?
Mr. Chairman, I think this is a good time, while I have Dr. Daley here as well, to take a look at your supplemental administrative report. The last bullet included in your packet is the Department of Education PowerPoint presentation on MCAS and Park field test participation decisions. As I had mentioned to you previously, I needed to come to you tonight and share my recommendation with you. So, leading up to that, on November 20th, Dr. Daley, Principals Sean Colleen and Chris Molly and I participated in a webinar that was presented by the Department of Ed, and attached, you'll see a copy of the PowerPoint. I think it's the last couple of pages in your packet. The purpose of the presentation was to provide information to assist with the decision about whether to exempt some students from MCAS testing in grades three through eight if the students were identified to participate in the performance-based assessment field test for Park. So, we have two of three grade, three classes at the Little School identified to take the PBA in mathematics, and two of the four grade-five classes at the Batch Elder were identified to take the PBA and the end-of-the-year tests in mathematics. So I must declare our intention to double-test or exempt students by Friday, December 6, 2013. You may recall that I had to indicate earlier this year whether or not the schools that had been identified to participate in the Park tests, including the middle school and the high school, were going to participate, or if I was going to ask for them to be excused. The districts will be notified by Pearson in December if the request not to participate is approved. So as I started to take a look at the timelines, I was saying, well, I need to know what that decision is before I make my decision on December 6th, because there's impact. So I did call the Department of Ed, and I did hear unofficially that, in fact, the middle school and the high school will be allowed not to take the tests. But that's unofficial.
Does that mean that we'll have, be assigned for more students from the other schools to take the tests?
No, not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Not to my knowledge.
Great.
So, after we had the presentation on the 20th of November, Dr. Daley and the two principals and I had a conversation about what would it mean to exempt or not exempt the students from participating in MCAS. So as we were having this conversation, we were taking a look at, again, it's third-grade mathematics at the Little and fifth-grade mathematics at the Batch. And the third grade would only be asked to participate in the PBA. So the Department of Ed told us that we needed to schedule about two hours for each session. There are two sessions for the PBA, and there are two sessions for the end-of-year. So we were having conversations, and I knew that Mrs. Molly really wanted her students to take the MCAS, because in third grade, it's the first year of establishing a baseline of performance on the MCAS. And those students will be with the Little School for three years, so third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade. We also know at the Little School that there are three classes at third grade, two of which will participate in the PBA and one will not. So we already know that two of the three classes would be involved in the field test.
The PBA is in the first part of the year, right?
Is the field test, the Park.
Right.
It's in March.
Oh, it's in March.
It's actually March 17th to April 4th.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, it's March 24th to April 11th. And again, we're talking just about math, not ELA.
Right.
So, we know that, again, with the students being at the Little School for three years, it's really important for us to have that MCAS data, because, as you know, we're also implementing, for the first time, the new educator evaluation system. And the educator evaluation system is explicitly tied to MCAS results if that is the grade level that is tested in MCAS. So we don't have MCAS tests in kindergarten, grades one and grade two, but we do in grade three. And you need two years' worth of data in order for that data to be used and tied to the CPI, which is what's used to indicate, or the SGP, growth. So, now we take a look at the Batch Elder School. And at the Batch Elder School, Principal Colleen had originally not wanted the students to participate, and I really didn't understand why. So I asked him to explain that to me. And if you take a look at grade five, grade five is not only taking ELA and math, they're also taking science. And when we took a look at what was being proposed for the field test in fifth-grade math, it's not just the performance-based assessment with two sessions, it's the end-of-the-year assessment as well, with another two sessions.
That's eight hours on that test.
An additional eight hours of testing.
In addition to the ELA for MCAS, which is how many hours?
Well, for the MCAS, ELA, math, and science, it's a total of five hours.
So that's 13 hours.
So it would be a total of 13 hours of testing in fifth grade. And then I said, now I understand.
Because how much more would the MCAS math then add on another three hours, or?
MCAS math is 90 minutes.
So just another hour and a half.
Now, remember, MCAS has these times that are approximate, but you can give students additional time if they need it. It's an untimed test.
But I think 13 hours is enough of standardized testing.
But Park is a timed test. So once you hit the threshold, you're done, whether you need more time or not. But 13 hours is an awful lot of testing.
Right.
Now, when we take a look at third grade, under the ELA, it's a reading test, and mathematics, MCAS is three hours and 30 minutes. And with the PBA layered on top of that, it would be an additional four hours, for a total of 7.5. So it's almost double in the fifth grade because of the additional test that's added on as the field test at the end of the year.
The only concern I have is, what are the dates for MCAS? Aren't they close to that?
I have those, yes.
PBA?
And what happens with third grade is that the ELA-MCAS is March 17th to April 4th. Now, we have to schedule two sessions within those weeks. So you have quite a large window. And with the PBA for mathematics, not ELA, it's from March 24th to April 11th. So again, you have to schedule two sessions within quite a wide window. And you don't have to give them on consecutive days. You can give one test one week, and you can give the other session another week.
But here's my concern, those two third-grade classes.
Yes.
In the March-April timeframe, are gonna be taking MCAS math, Park math.
No, not MCAS math. MCAS math is not until May.
But it's still, I consider that the same timeframe, March, April, May, I guess. I guess, to me, that's a lot for those kids in three straight months.
It is a lot. I'm not going to debate that. But Principal Molly would really like the students to take both tests, she has the MCAS data as the baseline data in grade three. And if you take a look at the PowerPoint that I provided for you, I think on the second page in the slide at the top of the page, it has a little tiny six in the left-hand corner, indicates that superintendents may choose to exempt students from MCAS in some schools and choose not to exempt students from MCAS in others, which was something that we discovered as we went through this.
I understand why Chris wants to do it. If I was a parent, I wouldn't be very happy, that's all. That's a lot of testing in a short period of time for third graders.
It is an awful lot of testing.
So Kathy, are you saying that's the decision?
I'm making the recommendation that the students in third grade participate in MCAS, and that the students in fifth grade at the Batch not participate in MCAS.
And are you passing that decision to the committee, or are you making that decision?
We don't have to vote on it, right?
You don't have to vote on it, no. It's a superintendent's decision, but I'm very interested in your input.
I'm not gonna override what Chris Molly wants to do, but if this was a voting issue, I'd vote no, because I think that's too much time for kids to be testing in a short period.
I agree with that.
I understand why she wants to do it, because they're gonna be at the school for two more years. But I'd rather, I'd rather say, let's just not take the Park than say, take Park and MCAS.
But we don't have the option not to take Park.
I know that, I know that. So. Karen, what do you think?
I think we should support what the administrators want to do locally. I think that's important, but again, I don't think this is something that our committee needs to rule on.
Yeah, I support what they want to do, I just think it's excessive. Janine?
I just feel bad for the kids, you know? Some people have test anxiety, and that's just, well, it'll either put them over the edge, or it'll get them over the hump, and they won't have anxiety anymore.
That's a very good point. If you look at page three of the slides that I gave to you, and with the, it's slide number 10, so the number is in the lower-left-hand corner, we were very interested to see this slide in the presentation. It says, "Do students learn during testing? What does the research say?" So this is coming from the Department of Ed. "The process of retrieval itself alters knowledge in anticipation of demands we may encounter in the future. Retrieval is, therefore, not only a tool for assessing learning, but also a tool for enhancing learning." And this research came from 2006. And "A more in-depth literature review will be made available in January." So this committee's not the only committee that's raising concerns around excessive testing, and the department is going to be putting out more literature in the future. We weren't in necessary agreement with this information, but we are open to reading more about this research.
Well, it's gonna be biased research. It's going in a position, so it's crap.
I guess, you know, my concern for Chris, and she'll be able to analyze this, is I'm just wondering what parent reaction is going to be. And I'm assuming there will be a meeting with parents to walk through this.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's something that needs to be communicated, and not in an email, but it needs to be in a meeting.
Oh, absolutely. And the teachers have been consulted, and the Little School teachers would like to offer MCAS, and the Batch Elder teachers agree that they would like to exempt the students from MCAS.
I guess one.
Well, how would you handle this to our parent who basically says, I don't want my kid doing this, and they're not going to?
You don't have any choice.
You don't have a choice.
Well, if they don't show up for Park, what happens?
And then they can't move forward.
There will be a make-up opportunity.
Staff will show up if they want. Well, he's saying if they don't show up at all for it, what will happen?
Are they gonna be forced to take it?
If they show up?
If, no, if they don't?
Oh, there's going to be a, we've been told that there will be a make-up date.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's not the question. The fact is, they're boycotting the test, they don't want to take it. So whether there's a make-up date, or a third make-up date, or a fourth, they don't take the test.
They don't take the test.
Okay.
It's a field test, so there's not a penalty.
Okay.
Interesting.
That's, yeah, that's gonna present an interesting problem for the principal, then.
And just to be clear, too, the other classes not selected will be taking MCAS.
Will be taking MCAS. They are not exempt.
Both in fifth grade and, well, obviously.
Right. In addition to the, in addition to the testing, will there be more prep time required for the Park PBA also?
Yes.
And so that's not being figured into that total that you gave us of the 13 hours?
Well, they've released some samples, they'll be releasing more samples. There's, none of the advisories have been released yet. It's enroll, and then we'll give you more information as the year goes on.
The prep time would be for the teachers and not for the students? Is that what you're referring to?
Right.
No, I was asking.
But there is some practice of drop and drag. There'll be some of that kind of practice, so that students know how to use the technology, because we are slated to be technology-field-tested, not paper-pencil-field-tested.
And it's about, what, 40 students we're talking about at the Little School?
Less than that, about 38.
Okay.
Two classes, yeah.
Two classes.
Now, how will the Batch handle the fact that they don't have the MCAS? Or is there gonna be a hole in the data, and how does that reflect?
There will be. They'll be moving on to the middle school.
Right.
So it's two classes out of four, and then all of the fifth grades will be coming together in sixth grade. So those students will be spread out across all of the sixth grade, and they'll be missing some MCAS data.
And will that, we don't know, what kind of impact it will have on them not taking MCAS in the fifth, and then going back and taking it again in the sixth? Because it, MCAS could change, so will that be a disadvantage for them? We don't know, right?
If they don't take the MCAS?
They're not taking it in the fifth, and they go and take it in the sixth.
I'm not sure that they would be at a disadvantage, as far as test-taking is concerned. MCAS is going to change no matter what. MCAS is not going to stay the same, because it's not currently aligned with the Common Core standards. So if we don't adopt Park, MCAS is changing.
It's gonna be Park called MCAS.
Right.
So MCAS is changing no matter what. So if you're, if you don't take it that year, it's going to be a different test. it's going to be a different test.
Okay. It's very difficult for the teachers and the administrators and the parents and the students.
Right. We do have suggestions on how this could have been better implemented, but we don't work for the...
Just stop whining.
I know. But I don't want to be whining.
Ask the commissioner.
We've given a tremendous amount of thought to this, and I've been discussing it in the superintendent's office with many from other districts. And we actually went in not sure whether we would even ever consider doing it differently at the two different levels, but we put all the facts on the table. And it did make sense to go with, the variables are very different, you know, with the two grade levels. I do support that idea.
It wasn't my first choice, but I was convinced.
The administrator in each building really needs to make that decision based on what their staff and teachers want to do.
And I trust them.
I trust them, too. I just, I wouldn't want to be in their position dealing with that, that's all.
No, but there are changes like this that happen pretty regularly, and I think they know their own community and how to address it. And, you know, if there are problems, that's feedback.
I agree.
And they were just like ours, being told we have to do it. Shut up and do it.
Right. Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you, Patrick.
Thanks, Patrick. See you next week.
He's here even on the Monday when we're not here.
We should just put a seat today.
Dr. Daley, we need to get one of those.
I know. I know.
Okay. Should we move back to continued business at this time?
Yes.
We have an update on the school building project?
Yes. Thank you.
Good stuff.
So, the last secondary school building committee was held on November nineteenth at six-thirty PM. And in terms of a very brief construction update, the project is on schedule and will finish on time. That's a quote.
That's a quote from her.
That was said at the building committee. I wrote it down.
Well, you better attribute that quote to somebody other than yourself.
No, it was at the building committee. We now have heat in Building A, and heat will be in place in Building B very soon. The air handlers have...
Temporary heat.
Pardon?
Temporary.
Temporary, yes. But I'm sure they're very happy to have that heat on these days. The air handlers for Building A have been installed on the roof. And inside Building B, we have taping and painting taking place. I'm sorry, inside Building A. Inside Building B, we have framing and drywall installation taking place. The curtain wall in the distance learning lab will be installed in about two weeks.
You can see the framework going up now. They have to build the framework because they have to build that curtain wall actually on the window.
On the window.
They started last Thursday, and they're about halfway up.
Yeah. I saw them out there today. And so, the glass should be installed by mid-December if we stay on schedule for that. The roof on Building D is done, and the exterior mason work should be completed in about two weeks. All of the site work is done now for the winter. And the paving on the parking lot began last Thursday, and it was done by last Friday.
What'd you do about your parking space? Were you parked?
I'm parking out front now, and Wayne put a sign up for me. I didn't want the sign, but he insisted.
Just so people know, you can't access the back of the building, the middle school building, any longer.
That will be until the completion of the project now?
Well, they're grading. They've got to grade that whole thing off. And if you go back there, they've changed, you know where the fence was right at the end of the building. Now, it's much further up. And then just they're grading it all off, so.
They're also digging to sink the tight tanks. And so, everything is changed out back. But it's moving right along, and that's what we want. As far as the design update is concerned, there has been some testing on the ties for the exterior of the middle school walls, and there's coordination for tight tank installation. I just mentioned that. Temporary art rooms will be installed under the distance learning lab until the renovation of the middle school section is complete. That was discussed. Also, the principals, Dr. Daley, Doran Whittier, Tavoris, and I have completed the first phase of the FFNE. And the design phase submitted to LEAD Online will take place by the end of December. I'm not sure if anybody wants to add anything to construction or design.
The LEAD, we're destined to make silver, but we're very close to making gold.
Oh, that's interesting.
And they're searching for other points that they can pull in to maybe push to gold.
That's important because it impacts our revenue.
We don't get more money, but it's a lot more prestige.
Right.
That would be fabulous.
Well, I don't know why it's fabulous, because I don't know what it means we have to eliminate, but that's all right. As long as we get our money.
Less light, no emissions, more windows.
After the Thursday meetings at the trailer, Cliff and I will sometimes go through. And I just wanted to say, and sometimes words just don't express it well enough, but just the amount of work that has gone in there, I cannot believe how fast they go. All of the electrical wires, the plumbing.
It is unbelievable.
You know, the HBHC, all of that stuff. It's utterly amazing that they work so well together. I could only imagine if you were a giant, it would look like little ants working on an anthill, you know? But they move so quickly and so efficiently. It's quite odd seeing it.
And so, well-integrated. You know, the different trades, the different contractors, the different subcontractors. And those guys just work together like they were family. It's very, probably better than family. But that's the thing. But they work right, you know, very, very well together.
Like Janine was saying, it's amazing that you can go in there on a Thursday, then go in the following Thursday, and actually notice what's been done. I mean, that's the thing. You know, you'd think if you went in there once a week, it would be hard to notice, but it's amazing how much has gone on in there. I mean, the exterior brickwork is ahead of schedule. I mean, that's ninety-eight percent complete. It's almost, you know, as far as the bricks concerned, it's just about closed in, the roof's on. The only thing they have to do is, you know, put windows in, and that doesn't be tight for the winter.
There was an issue with, how many windows were the wrong size, and they had to send them twelve?
Well, they had some in the front. There were twelve windows, but that's not a big deal. It's not a cost to us, so they're going to, those should be in in a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
They have plastic on them right now.
So, at the last meeting, invoices were approved. There were two change orders that were approved. The final PFA was reviewed by the owner's project manager with the MSBA. And you may recall that the original PFA was submitted to the MSBA in January of 2012. So, updates have been made to reflect the full reimbursement for pre-construction, and the SSBC voted to approve the revised PFA for our town administrator's signature. So, let's see. A draft agreement presented by the Abutters to the SSBC was reviewed by town council and returned to the Abutters attorney to be signed. The SSBC voted to approve twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars as a settlement agreement. And as a result, the original landscaping design for the building project has been restored. I've not heard any other updates at this particular time. The SSBC voted to remove the remaining exterior middle school window shades located on what is currently an exterior wall that will, once it's completed, be an interior wall on Main Street at a cost of up to twenty-two thousand, as quoted by a vendor. The price, though, is still to be negotiated.
Actually, Kathy, I think that's just the lower level.
Yeah.
Window shades. Just the lower level.
Did I say the upper? Oh, the lower level. You're right. It is just the lower level.
When we say shades, they're not shades. They're more like the ledges. That if you look at the middle school now, if you look at the front, you can see those.
The concrete legs. Right. Visors. That's a good term.
The goal is to eliminate, we will eliminate those on the bottom level, but on the top level. And I think we were, everybody was saying, pay a little tribute to the old middle school by keeping a little bit of...
Yeah, that plus it's going to cost another thirty thousand to take them off the top.
Right. Plus, we don't want to spend another thirty thousand to remove them.
There were two sets of executive session minutes that were approved, and the next regularly scheduled secondary school building committee meeting will take place on Tuesday, December third, beginning at five-thirty PM in the high school modular cafeteria.
I think it's interesting to note, we're approximately one-third through the spending. We've spent about one-third of the budget for the project so far. I think that's what Phil Dardino said.
Phil Dardino, who's a member of the subcommittee, does an excellent job in keeping us appraised of how much we've spent, how much we have left in the contingencies. And Phil, and I think Laurie Witz, and Don Calhoun. Thank God for Don, yeah. Do a great job with that.
And we're getting reimbursed on a regular basis from the state. It's different than they used to. They used to reimburse you at the end, do the whole project. Then they'd come in with a big fake check and hand it to the superintendent and the town administrator. Now, they reimburse as you go.
We have the big fake check.
Anything else on the project?
That is it.
Great. Thanks, Kathy. The financial assistance proposal, this is something we discussed back a couple of meetings ago. Michael had proposed, working with the administration, a new policy that really puts on paper what we're doing in terms of financial assistance for bus fees, for athletic fees, for extracurricular fees. Now, it's kind of a catch-as-catch-can policy where we don't really have anything. We don't have one central location for people to go to. We don't have it on paper the way it should be. And Michael wants to present tonight to us his recommendations for a policy moving forward.
Great. Thank you. So, first off, in your packets this evening was a couple of different handouts. One was a memo that kind of goes through a lot what Mel just spoke of. And one is a proposed application that would be part of this procedure. And the third, the colored chart, is the proposed income eligibility guidelines. And there's some data there that I'll get into in a minute that we spoke about. But essentially, the proposal that's before you this evening would essentially provide a consistent district-wide financial policy and procedure for those families that are seeking assistance on the district-wide fees. And that would be the athletics, extracurricular, busing. It could also apply to mandatory school field trips. So, there would be a consistent process there that is in place. So, much of what Mel just spoke to, our review of our current process did identify a few flaws that we feel this process would correct. The first is that the current process is a little bit inconsistent. Different programs and directors are doing something a little bit different, you know, across the district. Having the process that currently is tied directly to the free and reduced lunch application process can, in some situations, violate the USDA confidentiality guidelines of that free and reduced lunch process. So, removing the free and reduced lunch procedure and application process from providing additional financial assistance would certainly, you know, ensure strict confidentiality across the system. The current process has no real checks and balances with income verification procedures. So, the free and reduced lunch process, we are required to randomly select about five percent of those applications, which is a very small percent of the applications that we do receive on an annual basis. So, the procedure behind the policy that's in place would require a level of income verification. It makes it kind of straightforward. Everyone would need to submit the same documentation, whether it's your most recent tax returns and pay stubs. So, it creates a checks and balances system to ensure the information being put down in the application is accurate and up to date. So, the current process, in most situations, does result in either a full waiver being awarded. But in some cases, there are partial waivers awarded. But the policy and procedures being presented this evening would create a sliding scale based on your income eligibility. And it does make it pretty cut and dry and pretty straightforward. So, we feel the procedures being presented is, again, it is straightforward. It does provide families with a single point of contact and determination with the school district. So, I think sometimes families are confused about if they feel they would like to seek financial assistance. They're confused whether or not they're eligible. They're confused about who to contact, so this kind of makes it straightforward. It would remove the principal's office, in some cases, other directors from this process. Everything would flow through the business office, and it would kind of provide that single point of contact. It would not put, in some situations, you know, a principal or director trying to make an income determination of a family. So, it creates a very straightforward process. I know that there's, you know, there's some initial concerns in our policy subcommittee meetings about in adopting a financial assistance procedure with the income eligibility guidelines, would that create a potential revenue issue and a revenue shortfall? As you know, was presented at an earlier meeting, we very much count on a level of revenue for these programs that is a direct offset to our operating budget. So, we would not want to implement a procedure that would cause, you know, those offsets to be, certainly go down at this point in time. We definitely, certainly need those to balance our budget. So, we did some hard look at the data. We did some look at not only North Reading median income amounts. We also looked at state median income levels. We took a look at a lot of what some other families, other communities, I'm sorry, are doing in terms of their financial assistance procedures. And we also looked at what level of revenue and waivers between athletics, busing, and extracurricular are we currently adopting, and what is the revenue, you know, the financial impact of that process? So, that's what the supplemental handout, the colored chart, talks about. And based on that information, we made some initial adjustments to the income eligibility chart that we felt we were comfortable with. It's a chart that we feel certainly takes into account the data. It takes into account our current process. And we certainly don't feel it would cause a financial, you know, shortfall to the district based on our current revenues being collected. So, what it would result in is a sliding scale, and anyone that would meet the free lunch threshold would receive a full waiver, and that, for the most part, is what's happening today. It would result in a fifty percent waiver of a reduced fee for those families meeting the reduced lunch threshold. And in some cases, that's what's happening today. In some cases, they're receiving a full waiver, so it's even a little bit more restrictive. And then, it also provides an additional level of assistance. I think this is the key part of the procedure. For some families that do make above the free and reduced lunch, you know, federal poverty guidelines, but still are within fifty percent of the state median income, you know, thresholds, it would provide an additional, you know, seventy-five percent reduced fee, or twenty-five percent off of that fee for those families. So, we feel like because there's supporting documentation, and because the guidelines are not significantly, income eligibility chart's not significantly different than what we're doing today, we feel it will not create a financial impact, and it will accomplish the objective of ensuring confidentiality and providing a single point of contact in a very, you know, much more straightforward, consistent, and that's the real key, consistent process throughout the district. You know, I think it could even lead to, in some cases, us collecting more revenue that we're losing now. I really do.
Questions? Comments?
So, again, Mike, you're saying that if we implement this, or we make this policy, then we're not, you don't anticipate a loss in revenue?
I do not. I do not. Based on what the numbers I'm seeing that are in this bottom chart on this handout, I think, I don't think, I don't see it happening.
And since it's our policy, if we ran into a problem, we could change.
We can make changes. Yeah. And this wouldn't go into effect until next fiscal year. That's the proposal. You know, we've already made way into the year. Revenue's been collected, so we would start fresh with fiscal year fifteen.
Other questions? Comments?
I'm glad we're doing this. I think this is an important change, and it codifies something that I think is bad.
Right.
Absolutely.
We needed a district-wide policy that was consistent.
Do we have a uniform logical policy that's simple?
We have to take the principals and the athletic director and the coaches and everybody else out of the process.
Mike, it seems like you put a significant amount of time into this. Very good. Very good.
I just have one issue. I want to make a couple of things clear. One, this does not apply to preschool or kindergarten tuition.
That's correct. Yeah.
I think the other, two other things. There may be students today who are getting complete waivers, who are going to, next year, have to pay a percentage. I think we need to keep track of that and make sure that we don't lose participants because now they have to pay even a partial fee. I mean, we can't guarantee that we're not going to lose, but keep track of if we do start losing participants because they can't, I don't think that's going to happen. The final thing is, communication is critical. So, even though this doesn't go into effect until next year, I'd like to see this go out as soon as possible to high school students and eighth-grade parents. We may even, I don't know what our budget is for advertising. I'm sure the transcript will run a story on this, but we may even consider doing an ad in the newspaper also. When it gets closer, letting parents know that this is happening. I think it's great that we're codifying this, as Karen said. Everybody else, I think, agrees. Having this in the system as opposed to kind of willy-nilly, you know, well, I get free lunch, so I get, you know, my fee waived, or whatever. Now, we have a system with the numbers that, it's like anything else in life. You have to qualify for things.
Right. Yeah.
Not saying that people today don't qualify, but now we'll have it codified. So, I think this is, I think this is good.
Just one follow-up question regarding confidentiality. Are there, I don't know, I don't know well enough our policy, but this might be for a policy subcommittee, about the consequences of violating confidentiality in this circumstance? If we have this on codified, I'd like to be sure that if someone does violate it or there's something, that we have something backing it up. Could be just a procedure. So, I don't know.
There are federal guidelines, PERPA?
Yeah.
Where you must protect confidentiality?
In this circumstance, or in all?
In all circumstances around student records.
So, this is considered, so, for example, somebody drops up an application. I'm assuming that other people who are involved, other than the principal, prior to this potentially? So, would they also have to comply with PERPA, or?
Yes.
Yes.
As part of their...
Would review the guidelines as to how it has been handled and create a process by which it is streamlined again so that it comes through the business office, whether it's mailing directly as opposed to going to the schools.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this does require a vote?
Okay. Any further, actually, I'll...
It's a policy. Is it a first reading, or how would you do it?
Well, no, these are guidelines. Well, no, this is, these are guidelines.
We have a policy.
We have a policy.
All right, approved. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve the new financial assistance program overview, which will go into effect for the 2014, 2015 school year.
Second.
Motion by Cliff, second by Karen. Any further discussion? Harry, none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Great job, Mike.
Yep.
One other thing I mentioned to you in this, I think you probably already have this on your plate, and I don't know if it requires the same kind of system, I can't say the word, same kind of codification. Talked about clubs and et cetera, collecting money at the different schools, and it's probably a different kind of procedure. So, at some point, I'd like to see if there's any way we can also get that into a more of a systematic, I guess, approach than the way we're doing it today.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, it's one of the things that I'll be reviewing is certainly our student activity procedures, and I'll be taking a look at the manual and actually be trying to update that manual and those guidelines that will include cash handling guidelines.
It's really all over the place. I mean, you've got coaches collecting money, you've got Damascus, you've got all kinds of money floating around.
So, that is certainly on, on a to-do list. I've talked in a little bit to the principals about it and the assistant principals, and they know that it's something that's being reviewed, and, you know, certainly we'll try to, you know, get to that, certainly this year, if we can.
Okay. Next, we have a review of capital improvements and projects. Mike?
Just to set the context for this, as you know, there is a new committee in town, it's the Community Improvement Planning Committee, CIPC. Michael is a member, and Janine is a member. And what needs to happen is that the school committee will review the capital improvement plan for the school district, and then, Mike will be asking you to, to take a look at the priorities that we are recommending, and then, based on the recommendation of the school committee, we will fully develop the proposals that need to be submitted to the town by December, I believe, 16th. So, we'll be coming back to the next school committee meeting for your review of those fully developed proposals.
Right, we'll have to vote on them on the 9th, right?
Yes. Michael.
Okay, Mike.
So, in your packet this evening as well was the full large capital plan, and I handed out the PowerPoint presentation. What PowerPoint is, it's basically just a relatively quick presentation that tends to summarize the data that was in the capital plan. So, first off, when we looked at the capital plan this year, there was really three major categories that we saw our requests, you know, being categorized in, and I think this was consistent with how our requests have been done in the past. And there's really a vehicles category, we want to maintain a fleet of vehicles for building and grounds, special education, and food service vehicles, so there's a fleet of vehicles we need to maintain in that particular place. Certainly, technology is always a big part of the technology, the capital plan, certainly from an instructional and administrative standpoint, and then, facilities and building maintenance and so forth. So, those are the three categories that the plan is focusing on. The CIPC process this year is looking at the eligibility criteria for something qualifying as a large capital plan, as being something that has an existing useful life of at least five years or more, and has a total cost of $20,000 in the next, in next fiscal year, fiscal year 15. This is a quick capital summary chart of the request. This is the three years, so we're looking at, we kind of went out a little bit beyond three years in our, our internal capital plan that's before you this evening. The Capital Improvement Planning Committee has made a request for, for three years with priority and detailed focus being obviously for next fiscal year, but they'd have requested data going three years out. This is a three-year snapshot. I think the plan, the detailed plan is four years, but this is the three-year plan, the request that are before you this evening to consider, and I'll kind of get back to this at the end of the presentation. So, the first one we're going to talk about is the vehicle plan, is the vehicles. So, we have eight vehicles total in our fleet. We have four special education vans, which we use daily, one food service van, and three building and ground vehicles. So, the special education vans, we had one that was certainly approved with FY12 capital funds, which leaves a remaining, three vans remaining, each purchased in 2005, 2006, and 2007. So, you may see on your request this evening, a request to start replacing these machines beginning in fiscal year 16, beginning with the oldest van, which has, each of these vans have an estimated cost of $35,000. So, 2006, about, you know, fiscal year 16, that, 2005, that van will be over about 10 years old, and it would certainly be due for replacement with its mileage and so forth. So, it's not, the request that's before you in fiscal 15, but we would want to start a replacement cycle for our special education vans, beginning in fiscal 16, and try to make an effort to do one, one per year. The building and grounds, this is the highest priority in terms of our vehicle in our fleet, which is the request that we have before you this evening for fiscal 15, and that would be to replace the oldest van. It was, it's a 2002 van, it was purchased used in 2006, it has well over 100,000 miles on it, and it was certainly, it's been through certainly several repairs, and it was certainly the highest priority for replacement. And that cost is estimated to be at $30,000. So, if you look through the history of what's ahead of you in the detailed plan, you will see that with fiscal 14, the CIPC through the first year of the process did fund one of our utility trucks and did purchase enough, upgrade an F-350 truck to an F-450. That vehicle should be delivered within the next couple of weeks. So, that, that's certainly going to be very, very helpful to the building and grounds fleet. But this is the highest priority, and that's on the request for fiscal year 15. And we move on to the technology needs, and this has kind of been, you know, the biggest challenge in putting this plan together, because there's a lot of moving pieces, and you kind of saw sort of a prep of what we're kind of looking at in the five major projects that are going to be included in the plan. I know Dr. Daley and I presented that to you, you know, about a month ago. So, you know, because of the FFNE budgets with the new high school and middle school are providing some, some level of funding, it's certainly, it's sort of more challenging to look at our priorities from technology and to try to determine what we want to focus on for fiscal 15. But certainly, a priority, and we think certainly something that does need to be addressed, is to put $75,000 request in for replacement of computers. So, many teacher computers were purchased in 2006, and they are certainly in need of replacement. So, these are getting certainly, you know, much past, you know, well past their useful life.
Michael, what are, what are those running for an operating system? Windows XP or something?
Which will stop the service.
Right, that's not feasible anymore.
I believe there's a majority of these computers were purchased with the new building, with Bachelor School building back in 2006. So, time does go by, so, you know, those were ones where in good condition, they're now certainly in need, need of replacement. So, this is certainly a priority, we felt, certainly deserved one of our priority requests for fiscal 15, and we would, we'd like to do that. Certainly, Bachelor School would be the focus, but we feel with the funding level, we could look at certainly other areas and across the district, and certainly replace the computers that are in need of replacement. And certainly, we've moved to laptops, it's certainly been the focus in recent years. So, the next request, again, for fiscal 15 in terms of technology, does involve a phone upgrade. The acquisition cost is $40,000, and this is for the elementary schools only. So, the high school and middle school, they will be, be receiving a new phone system, an upgrade of their phone system with, as part of the high school, middle school project. That's a voice-over IP system, so it's certainly, you know, very up-to-date, you know, modern system. And this request of $40,000 would certainly allow the, the elementary schools, you know, across the district to also receive the same, similar, similar system. So, we looked into this, and a great deal of time has gone into looking into this project and trying to determine what's the best time to attempt to roll out, you know, this, this type of a project. And we do feel that there are economies of scales benefit, and there are some, some, some things that do make sense to try to focus on this for next year. Certainly, you know, the, the system at the elementary schools is extremely outdated. It's an old analog copper phone system. It's very difficult to maintain, it's difficult to troubleshoot when there is an issue, and moving to this type of a voice-over IP system, some of the additional benefits that we would receive through, through this sort of hosted off-premise, you know, voice-over IP system would be the following: unified messaging, video conferencing, the system that would never be down, so right now, the system can go down with the, you know, voice-over IP, you know, hosted, you know, off-site hosted site, the system would not go down. There would be unlimited lines, so right now, each of these schools have a limit to the number of lines that they can call. So, sometimes you get either a busy signal, or you can't make a call out in some situations. So, this would kind of certainly address that problem from a safety and a security standpoint. It would also kind of reduce the amount of time, the technology, in some cases, the business office staff, certainly spending trying to maintain and program a very kind of antiquated, out-of-date phone system. So, there is, you know, anytime there is an issue, it's very hard to kind of figure out what the issue is. We have to kind of rely and go back to the supplier who supplied, who, you know, installed the system several years ago. So, this would make it, you know, certainly much more easier, and I think there is sort of an opportunity cost involved that, you know, our current, you know, technology staff would save time and be able to re-task their, their efforts and their valuable time into other areas in the district, which will certainly be needed next year when we go online with the new high school and all the new devices and management that's going to be involved. So, because of that, economies of scale benefit, you know, certainly the town is interested in getting involved and partnering, partnering up with the school with this request. Certainly, there is a strong possibility that by rolling the elementary schools into this purchase, it could, you know, allow certainly more, more funds in the high school, middle school FFNE budget to be purchased. So, that, those dollars could even, you know, stretch and be able to expand and purchase more equipment. So, it's certainly a need that has to be addressed, and we felt, given the timing, it was a request that we would put forward for fiscal 15 on this plan. Looking out for our future needs, we've talked about the student-staff information management software, we've talked about the current limitations of our current system, we've talked about certainly the benefits that, you know, other systems that are out there certainly bring to the district, having kind of a, an all-for-one, you know, certainly system. But there's still a great deal of research that needs to kind of go into what, what systems are out there. We've done some, we've done some review and analysis, we've done some surveying of other, other communities to see what, what systems they're using. Certainly, myself and Dr. Daley have met with, you know, a few other vendors out there to see what the benefits are, and we feel like we certainly need to be on the horizon, but we feel like we need to really do it right, another year's worth of research and data to, to make this analysis. And we also feel from an administrative standpoint, certainly the principals, there's going to be a lot of changes going online at the high school next year, in particular, at the middle school moving to the old high school, and this would, you know, making this pretty large change would be, you know, a lot to take on by the administrative and staff. So, we feel like it's something that needs to be on the outer layers of the plan. We've, we've put it in fiscal 16 on your capital plans before you this evening, but certainly, it's, it's something that has to be addressed, but we feel like it's probably at least a year down the road. The iPad initiative, so it's certainly been a focus at each school in the past, and we feel it's certainly something that we need to continue to think about. We've sort of put it on the plan in the, in the outer, outer years. You know, essentially, you know, we feel like certainly iPads is something that's extremely important, that we want to, you know, continue to bring into the, into the district. We feel we can sort of move this initiative on purchasing additional carts at each school kind of out into fiscal 17, fiscal 18, focused on our infrastructure, on increasing the, the bandwidth and improving the wireless and infrastructure, try to keep doing what we're doing in purchasing carts, you know, in other avenues of funding in the interim, and look to, to go on a full acquisition cost kind of in, you know, a couple of years down the road, once we know, you know, our bandwidth and infrastructure is able to deal with the, the usual iPads.
With Patrick still here, I want to direct a question to him.
Sure.
Are we locked into iPads? Because iPads are, there's a lot of other tablets now, especially in the Android world, that do a lot of good things, and they're a lot less expensive than the iPad. So, I was just wondering if we're locked into that.
Sure. We're part of, it was a pilot program. We locked in for sure from the beginning for several reasons. Apple still has the best system to work with schools. It's the safest system, all the apps are sandboxed and safe, you know, there's still issues with that. There is no, you know, the store is very different format. So, there's pieces for that. But we are definitely exploring different options out there as well. And, you know, again, this was a pilot program, and we're looking at, it's not that we found that the iPads aren't great, they're great for what they are, but, you know, we're still exploring other options. We've, we've also been exploring Chromebooks as a different, I think, like I've said before, when people try to use the iPad as a laptop, it often comes up short. And I, I personally think the iPad as a textbook is really where it comes through. When you start using that as your book, I think that's really when it will tip, you know, the tipping point for that. So, yeah, but cost continues to be a concern, you know, as far as implementing one-to-one or something like that. I think there's other avenues we're going to explore. So, yes, we are, we are looking, we're keeping our options open, and part of what we're really exploring through our mobile device management system is a system that can allow either us or students to have multiple devices. That's something we're not able to do now. We'll, we'll be speaking of this in a few weeks, but currently, our iPad system is, is a, it's a consumer model. It's one-to-one. I'm, myself, my tech team are in there setting up each individual iPad. What we, what we're talking about with mobile device management is the ability to push out apps, controls, safety, all that stuff.
Right, so, security is the big issue there.
The pilot, we've been able to do it, one cart per school and a few others that have come in, but as we scale up, we're going to need that device system, but we will be able to explore other options as well.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. So, the next item we have, we talked about in the past, that does need to be addressed, is certainly the wireless infrastructure at the elementary schools. Certainly, our current solution in the virtual network environment that, you know, Patrick and his team has, have created, is certainly taken care of and doing the, doing the job at the moment, but we know kind of down the road, we're going to have to certainly spend some funds in sort of upgrading this wireless, wireless infrastructure, and most likely, you know, the repurposed funds from the middle school and high school would probably be able to, to be repurposed to an elementary school, and the access points and so forth could certainly take care of upgrading one elementary school, but certainly about $100,000 for each of the other elementary schools down the road would be needed to adequately upgrade and replace switches and increase bandwidth and increase access points to support the infrastructure and improve our wireless at these, at these schools. So, that's kind of been, been put off, but certainly we know in the future, it's going to need to be addressed. Moving to the facilities plan, the first, and kind of one of the top priorities from facilities, building, maintenance need on the fiscal 15 plan is to make a repair, upgrade the, sort of the hood energy system. This would cost about $25,000 to take care of this and install a new energy management system at the hood school. What we would be able to do with these funds is install an automated logic system, which could build off the existing energy management controls that is now in existence at our other schools, particularly the Bachelor School and the Little School. It would also, would be the system that will be installed at the middle school and high school next year. So, by doing this, I think this is, you know, to me, one of the, one of the top priorities because there is, it can lead to savings, there's a payback period, and, you know, for $25,000, if we focused on the boiler room only, we can make an upgrade and really increase and be able to really pinpoint into the detail and save some money in, in energy use at this school. So, the little school has paid off, and we can do the same at the hood, hood school as well. So, that's kind of our top priority from facilities for fiscal 15. In the outer years in the plan, something we need to be aware of, there's a couple of big-ticket items coming down the road. The first of which is the little school B-wing roof is certainly showing signs of deterioration and decay, and will need to be addressed and replaced. That is a high-ticket item with an estimated cost of $250,000. So, that needs to be, be addressed down the road. The asbestos mitigation, this is something that we did receive $50,000 of funds for under the current planned fiscal, fiscal 14 capital plan, and, and speaking with certainly the, the building grounds director, Wayne Hattigar, every other year, we feel is certainly the, the way to go, is the best approach to asbestos mitigation. So, we, we feel in fiscal 16, if we can continue this program, that we were able to replace, you know, tiles and, and ceiling tiles at the little school- you know, tiles and ceiling tiles at the little school, we'd be able to certainly take care of this on a very, very, you know, really methodological approach with these funds every other year. So this is included in fiscal 16, it's again included in fiscal 18 as well with that every other year approach. For the hood school boilers, this is for $300,000, you know, fiscal year 17 upgrade. The current hood boilers are over 14 years old, so again, they're going to need to be replaced, they're on the plan for fiscal 17, and it is a high-ticket item of $300,000. But again, by replacing them and creating, you know, high-efficiency condensing boilers, certainly will provide more energy efficiency and lead to operational cost savings as well. The hood walkway rebuild, this is kind of a lower priority, it was listed on the plan last year. The walkway has been lifting and has becoming, you know, a bit of a safety issue. Certainly, Wayne and I actually went out and took a look at it, we didn't think it was a top priority at this time, but, you know, it is there, something to be watched, and it may need to be re-graded in the future. So we have included it on fiscal 18 of the plan, it's about a $30,000 cost. And then the asbestos mitigation program that I just spoke of, and that every other year approach would be included for another $50,000 in, you know, four years out in fiscal year 18. So those are the facilities plans. What this snapshot looks at is again, the three-year total, you know, this request this year, the $30,000 utility van vehicle, technology would focus on phones and computer replacements for fiscal 15, and the facilities, the $25,000 would focus on the energy management system at the hood. So kind of looking at the outer years, I sort of highlighted and tried to pull out, you know, a few high-ticket items, the things that we need to be aware of. So, you know, fiscal 16, you have this high-ticket item of facilities of $300,000. That's a combination of the asbestos and the little school roof, so, and then in fiscal 17, that $300,000 in that year is that the hood boilers, and then you have the technology and the wireless infrastructure that we will start to replace and address. So you can kind of look over these three-year, three-year plans, there's some high-ticket items there for facilities approach that we have to be aware of and address over the next three years. In summary, we have immediate capital needs to support educational goals and breadth of curriculum, so that is certainly clear. With the new high school and middle school, in the immediate future, certainly, certainly from a facility and technology standpoint, we will have a focus on the elementary schools over the next five years. Replacing staff computers and improving the wireless infrastructure at the elementary schools will certainly need to be addressed. However, as I just showed you in the chart, there are facility capital needs that need to be planned for in the future so we can be prepared as well. So we can't, we can't, you know, certainly look past our facility needs. And I think we need to continue to review our short and long-term capital needs so we can be prepared to support the school department's needs to the capital improvement planning committee. So the last slide kind of goes through the capital planning committee timeline. Again, we kicked off a meeting last month, Janine and I are present on the committee. Capital request sheets I do from each department on December 16th. CIPC plans to review all the requests and make field trips if necessary to gather all relevant information, this will probably take place in January. CIP members will rank these requests, we plan to kind of rank these requests individually and try to come and have a meeting sometime in February to come to a consensus on the ranking. The committee will review and come to a consensus of the ranking order sometime in March, and then this will be presented to the three major boards in April. So I think this evening, I think the main goal, the final, for the final articles, which should, for the June town meeting, that's to be done in April. So I think the goal for this evening is to look at the requests with the focus on fiscal 15, and try to, you know, have a discussion of the priorities of those requests so we can be prepared to complete the CIPC request sheets and bring those forward at the next meeting for final review, that they are due on December 16th. So at that point, I think I'll open it up to any other questions.
Questions?
So Mike, you haven't, you have not presented these requests to the CIPC yet, have they looked at these?
They have not seen this. So their requests aren't due to the 16th, so we wanted...
So it's up to us now to establish our priorities and forward it to them.
Correct.
To them, okay.
Yeah, so we're looking for feedback and...
Do you think your technology requests are ambitious enough, or?
I mean, we certainly think, there's certainly needs there, and, you know, we try to be as economical as we can in our approach to trying to spread out and phase in the projects. You know, we felt the computer replacements and just the timing of the economies of scale, the phones just kind of made sense to put that in fiscal 15, and we felt the, you know, the tiered approach to addressing the wireless infrastructure as well as to focusing on the iPads and so forth, you know, we felt, you know, kind of made sense. And again, that software piece needs to be looked at, but, you know, we felt like it's something that's going to need to happen over the next couple, next two, three years.
Patrick and Wayne have had a great deal of input into these.
Yeah, certainly, we've certainly had several meetings, and I thought, you know, Dr. Daley's here tonight, but we certainly have spoken about it in great detail.
Once again.
I'll just speak to that. When we presented last time, we heard from you about the technology needs, and, you know, we would consider additional devices. As we're, a lot of what's in flux, as Michael said, is the repurposing of existing devices, and a lot of those devices are old, you know, and we really want to give elementary schools the best stuff. We don't want to give them hand-me-downs that are out of date. So, I mean, increasing, you know, students are ready at those elementary levels, as you see with the assessments, they're going to be practicing on these devices. So that is an area where we budget $75,000, but...
We have an opportunity here with the new middle school, high school coming online, we can, like you said, that's been addressed, and now we can focus on the elementary schools. So how do we compare, do you have any new way of knowing how we compare technology-wise with other districts, the way they're doing things?
As far as spending?
Well, not just spending, but we were at...
Implementation, I guess.
I mean, I can speak, and I know there's, a lot of districts are struggling with their wireless network infrastructure piece, and I think that's certainly very, very important, because, you know, Patrick can go in much more detail than I can, before you can have, you know, think about bring your own device atmosphere or...
And you hear about Burlington, that everybody in high school has an iPad, now they're going to try to do that for everybody in the district and...
Right, and I think this, I think this, you know, struggle has, for a lot of districts are facing with is how to find the funds to upgrade and come in with a very robust, you know, wireless infrastructure. And then from there, they can start to think about bringing in the devices and being able to effectively certainly manage it from that, that's the end point.
It would seem like with the middle school, high school project, we have kind of an opportunity to see what the right system is to go with that, and these systems are going to change forever. So it would seem like that snapshot of that might be a good opportunity to say, yeah, we are standardized on that one.
Good learning moment.
Across the whole system, all districts. And it would also seem that the wireless element is critical to having success in our technology implementation. That that's the foundation that everything connects to. And I know that in my home, the wireless is a critical element.
Yeah, we pushed that up, and you've seen from our last presentation, because my tech team developed a way to create a network within the classroom, basically the wireless travels with the devices. So when you're in that classroom, you have a robust wireless that goes with it. That took a lot of work and a lot of time, and it worked very well. It's not the plan I want for the long term, but it did allow us to concentrate on a few other areas and to sort of push that out over the next few years. We're also, as I mentioned before, lots changing with wireless right now, so that'll be, you know, in a couple of years, it'll really take shape for those elementary schools. Just in general terms, is where we compare, I mean, I can definitely prepare some more data to look at districts, but we're not at a Burlington, another one-to-one, but just in conversation, we're in a much better place than a lot of other districts, just the fact that our teachers have the devices, but the teachers that do have the devices, because the way we approached it, are all using them really well, they're getting the support with professional development, we have tech support that can support the number of devices we have. If we went to one-to-one right now, we just don't have the tech team to support that. So we've, our plan has worked well, but I can definitely look to some more, some more actual data about numbers of devices.
Patrick, see where we stand.
Sure. Are you confident that the interim solutions for wireless at the elementary schools aren't restraining the teachers at all? It's working well enough that we don't have to rush this $100,000 two years earlier?
Right, right, so far, so good. We've been collecting feedback from the teachers that are using that this year, and it's worked very well. And just, again, it's a, we're not putting in a consumer model here, this isn't a router you'd have at your home. This is a Cisco router that's in the room, that's able to hold not only 30 devices, but 30 devices streaming. We test them out, we put them to a, you know, we push the system to do everything it can do, and we've had, we've been looking at Aerohive, Aruba, different, as we're testing out for the high school, we're also pushing and testing them out at the elementary schools, so.
I think the BYUOD offers a great opportunity, but obviously, there's a lot of issues with that, once you let kids start using their own devices and from security and access and all that kind of stuff. So, I mean, I think in the long run, that's, you know, probably going to be the way that you get, that you get one-to-one. Because a lot of these kids have tablets at home or whatever, Chromebooks, right? Some don't, but we'll have enough at the school where the kids who don't have, can use what's at the school, and the kids who do have, can bring them into school.
As Mr. Bauer said, we'll start with the high school with that device management system and roll it out, and then the middle school, and then we'll have a great test case to roll out wider at the elementary level. You'll be here before we know it, but FY 18, 17, 18, so.
Karen? No, we're going to go to the next. Karen?
I just have some, two questions. The hood upgrade to the energy management system, I'm just reading the footnotes about the decision to choose to monitor the boiler room versus the whole school, and what the difference was, and why that decision was made.
Again, it's certainly extensive to do the whole school, I mean, $110,000 is a lot of money to make that investment. The little school did it in the hood, in the boiler room only, and they saw savings, and it certainly was very, very effective. So we're looking at kind of a bang-for-your-buck approach, and we felt with, you know, $25,000, we felt was very feasible, you can achieve a significant amount of savings, and certainly Mr. Hattigar felt very confident he could kind of find point those occupancy schedules and create a level of savings. So he felt, you know, certainly it would be great to do the whole school, but from an economic standpoint, with the other requests coming forward, we felt it made sense to focus on the boiler room only.
Okay. Actually, I have more than two questions, I have two questions in common, I'm sorry!
I'm sorry.
I just wondered if there is any audiovisual equipment at the elementary level that we have considered in capital planning? I know we're getting new media and, you know, cameras and things like that for the media center at the high school, middle school. So I just wondered if any, we needed anything, if there's something that we have looked into there, or if that makes sense.
You're thinking in terms of like video production equipment, that type of? At this time, every school, we upgraded, two years ago maybe, all digital cameras and tripods and everything for school events and school programming, and to my knowledge, that's still been sufficient for what the needs are. I haven't heard that request, but we, I can definitely bring that back and...
I just wonder, because I know that that's also an evolving area, and, you know, we think about structural technology, I just want to be sure that we've assessed, even two years is a long time.
Yeah, that's true.
And different, different needs. And then my last comment is, I think we should move the management software to 15.
Turn to the one.
The student staff management software, given what Patrick's recent presentation, I feel that's compelling, given the fact that we're struggling on the, well, we meet the state reporting requirements, but it is a challenge to continue to be compliant, and that is a real key role of our committee, to ensure compliance.
The only issue is, and I agree with you, the main issue is implementing it when we're bringing the high school and middle school online.
There's a tremendous amount of professional development. I mean, at the core of our management system is scheduling, that alone, the amount of training required for that with all the other moves, it's a bit of a challenge. And so we've also uncovered through our meetings that we've been taking, that there's a lot to uncover here to make the best choice. So we are starting to explore, we're continuing that this year, but the actual decision, we were hoping to put off for a year just because of the enormity of the decision, and also the amount of training, the districts that have gone through a switch to another system, everyone from the folks doing the scheduling, to the secretaries and end-users doing the training, there's just so much change in the next couple of years. We thought we'd get much better results if we put the...
We feel like we'd almost have to be ready to roll that out at the start of the year. So almost the beginning of fiscal 16, we would need the data and the decision and to be ready to really do that, and do that, or to make, be a good approach on that, otherwise it would be too much to take on at one time.
I definitely can appreciate the committee's appreciation of that. It's sort of a behind-the-scenes, but it's so important, and, you know, when we talk about data and everything, the way our systems talk to the reporting agencies is so important. It's a real behind-the-scenes thing, but it's very important for the budgets.
Couple things.
Kathy, answer Anna.
I was just going to ask the committee, since we were just still talking about the technology initiative, if there would be any interest in moving the FY 16 request for the iPad initiative to FY 15.
Well, I was going to ask about the iPads, and I don't understand how they qualify for the five years of more useful life. That seems a long time for a piece of technology like that, or a laptop computer, because in five years, if the operating systems evolve, those things really aren't going to be useful. I don't understand how those qualify for the, for that five-year life thing. I would like to move them up, but I don't understand that.
But historically, in school systems, we use our technology beyond what's considered to be the longevity of that piece of equipment.
An iPad in five years is going to be obsolete though.
We have desktop computers that are antiquated, we've been using them.
We shouldn't be, but we are.
It's a different standard in education.
It's okay.
So we can, we can convince them that five years, this five-year life for these things.
I mean, it's, even the first iPad, it's not really supported as much, it's still useful. I mean, we have the iPad 2s mostly in the district, those are still supported by Apple, we're coming into the third year now of those. But I agree with you about that, it changes so quickly, but I think we can justify...
It might be more so on the computers than the iPads. We can get back to that, if I can, I wanted to ask another question about the boilers. I thought boilers had a much longer lifespan than what we're talking about here.
14 years?
14, I mean, I think they're like 30 years. And so I guess I don't, unless we're being Pennywise and Pompfoolish, and we're going to save so much more energy by putting new boilers, then we should spend $300,000, I don't, I don't, I have a little bit of a problem with that request for the next fiscal year. Fiscal 17.
Fiscal 17.
Yeah, because by then, they'll be 16 years old or 17 years old, I guess.
I've got some experience with new boilers that are lit, and that may be a little bit of what's pushing.
Yeah, but I guess I don't...
They're very efficient.
Yep. But how long would it take us to, I guess, my question is, very efficient is one thing, are the existing boilers a risk to fail is another thing? Because you're spending $300,000, that's...
It's probably 15% savings in fuel.
Okay. I guess before I would, we've got two years to think about that, but before I'd approve that, I can see a lot of data.
I can get some data on that.
That's when I saw that. I know the boilers, when we replaced the boiler at the middle school, it was out of necessity. I mean, we had to replace it, it was going to...
Same as up there. We had to rebuild the room or something, we had to...
Yeah, it was essentially going to fail.
Yeah, certainly talked to Patrick about that.
I'd want more data on that going forward. On the iPad thing, I was going to suggest that we move that from fiscal 16 to fiscal 15, $48,350. No?
I think it's a fun word.
But I don't have a strong feeling either way. It seems to me that we have a lot of things in the district right now, and we're getting along just fine, and again, I think we have to think a little bit about continued austerity in our fiscal requests as we continue to bring our new school online. So I wouldn't have a problem with keeping it in 16. If we could move to 15, great, keep in 16, I'm fine with that.
I just think that we need to focus on structural equity at this point, which why I think the timing makes sense. Yeah, the iPads thing, I think there's just a little more research we need to do and think a little bit more about.
It might not be iPads, it might be something else, right?
Well, I think they'll be there, it's just a question of, we've got all these carts, we have a huge investment in staff training around that topic, and it, there's been positive feedback, and there's a connection to student achievement and learning, particularly in classrooms where those carts are used. So we know that that's an effect, and that's our role is to set up procedures that are related to student achievement, and I think that's worth investing in, but I think the recommendation is acceptable.
I'm 100% supportive of the three things that you're requesting this year. I think the phone system, operating phone system while we're doing middle and high school makes complete sense, we may be able to get a better deal because they're in town, and they're doing it anyway, bringing them more business, probably be an advantage to us. Bringing them more business would probably be an advantage to us. Computers that are running Windows XP need to be replaced tomorrow.
Right, because there's three more operating systems.
Right, three or four. I mean, you know, we're on Windows 8.1 now, 8.1, and.
Four.
And then the, we obviously need a van to.
Yeah, so there's four total requests for this year.
Right.
So, it sounds like you're saying that we support the plan for fiscal 15.
Janine?
That structure seems okay.
Seems okay to me. I think Jerry supports it 100%.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we'll just take a vote on that next meeting.
Yeah, and then I'll come forward with the request sheets based on what we talked about today for final review before submission to the.
And you don't have to get the data yet for the hood thing. I mean, just when.
Yeah, I'll talk to him. That's interesting. I'll get that information.
But that's, obviously, it's two years out, so.
It's a good, it's a good question.
I do have one question.
Sure.
In, only because going to the trailer meetings, as we call them, with the excessively high ceilings in Main Street in classrooms, changing light bulbs and whatnot would probably be a lot easier with one of those scissor lifts.
On the FFNE.
Oh, it is? Oh, okay. All right, so that's why it's not here.
Right.
Got the 4,000 pound, 4,000 horsepower floor polisher in there. Got all the good stuff.
All right, good to know.
Lot of red lines.
Okay.
Kathy, you have anything to add on?
I do not. I would like to just thank both Mr. Connolly and Dr. Daley for all of their work.
Yes.
On preparing this report.
Great job.
For you.
Yep. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, next, move on to minutes. I reviewed all these and found no errors. First, we have the pre-town hall meeting on October 28th. Um, excuse me, 28th meeting in Town Hall Room 14.
Move to those minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion? Very none, all those in favor? Aye. Post. One abstention from Ms. Araketti. Then we have the November 12, 2013 executive session meeting room, executive session meeting minutes from the meeting was at the LD Batchell School Conference Room.
Move to those minutes.
Wait, sorry.
Oh, wait, a approval in a second, and then we can.
Second, I'm just going to make a request.
Oh.
If I'm two minutes late to a meeting, give me the benefit of the town. Don't put it in the record. Meeting starts at 6:31 and I write 6:30.
You're not getting marked on 6:33.
I know, it's just weird. You don't have to be that attentive to details. Not important, so.
It threw me off completely.
Completely, totally.
The only, may I, may I comment? The vote to go into executive session, you weren't present for that, and so.
Oh, that's.
It was a 4-0.
That's why you put it.
I had to put some time down.
Just add time to it so it makes it look like I was actually really late.
Oh, instead of, instead of two minutes, yeah, 6:39. All right.
It was a joke.
So, we have a motion, we have a motion by Mr. Bowers. Do we have a second on these executive session minutes?
Second.
Further discussion? Very none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post unanimous. And then we have the regular meeting of the school committee, November 12, at the LD Batchell School.
Move to those minutes.
Motion by Cliff, second by Janine.
Oh, there's a discrepancy.
What?
The second session starts at 6:31, and this one starts at 6:30.
Right. Actually, you have the time for the regular meeting starting at 6:30, right?
But you opened the meeting at 6:30.
Oh, okay.
And then we went into executive, what does it say, an executive session?
6:31.
Right. Very good.
Yes.
So, we have to have an amendment on the.
Nope.
Nope.
That's right.
No, that's right.
You opened the meeting at 6:30. You went into executive session at 6:31, we returned to the regular.
Okay.
That's good.
Okay.
Well, that's super fun, and I was just saying it was late, seriously.
Yeah. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. Post unanimous. Look at it, you were almost pumped.
Yes, very good. Exactly.
What the heck? Seriously.
Okay, we have budget update.
Great. Thank you.
Michael's got a lot of airtime.
Mike is trying to.
Yeah. So, NARLA, new information on the November budget report being reported this evening. I think the same drivers continue to be at play that's kind of driving the financial and budget situation fiscal 14. You know, certainly special education costs, we've kind of discussed it in the past, but we need to certainly continue to monitor these costs, and we're able to cover some of the anticipated costs to meet sort of newly identified student needs that have risen this year with some additional revenue, as well as with the prepayments that took place with fiscal 13 funds. We're also monitoring closely the food service program. I will say the program and my review with Charles' management team certainly performed, you know, better than forecasted in October, when we closed out the month of October. Mail counts at each level were up from this period last fiscal year. The projected loss was certainly, you know, less than we had been certainly forecasted. They felt this was certainly the result of better inventory control. Certainly, we've documented and we've talked about the lower labor cost, which is certainly helping the numbers, and there was about a 245 sales average per day higher than certainly last October. So, we hope this is the start of a new trend. We hope these numbers will continue in the food service program. The other information I will kind of highlight this evening is on the payroll side. We certainly have talked in the past about the need to hire long-term substitutes, and this can sometimes lead to a, have a budget impact, and that certainly occurs when you have, when you incur a double payroll for a period of time. So, we certainly had the need to fill some leave of absences. This has recently been the case, and the need to fill the assistant pupil personnel director position. I believe Ms. Willis will speak to that shortly, but we've certainly hired an interim assistant director, but we have sort of certainly had this period of time where we are incurring a double payroll. So, you'll notice on the payroll projection report that the administrative line is now reflecting a deficit, and that is really the result of that deficit. And we've certainly talked about the other two lines on the payroll report that are projecting a deficit and the need to, one is certainly the general paraprofessional line, and that was a need to hire an additional paraprofessional in the full-day kindergarten program as a result of enrollment, and that program being higher than expected. And we certainly have talked about the business office accountant line in the past. I just want to remind you, the debt deficit is the result of us currently not counting on that facility rental offset for time spent going through the facility rental, you know, billings at this point in time. So, all the payroll lines are within budgeted lines, and I think, you know, we continue to be in good standing. You know, certainly, you know, we want to closely monitor and focus on special education. It'll be important as we, you know, approach, you know, the end of quarter two, but, you know, other than that, the budget is certainly in good standing. Again, the heating season, we know, we'll certainly, you know, today was certainly a very cold day. It's kind of early to see what a heating degree day is going to do this year. We're certainly hopeful that, you know, we'll be able to have some savings to repurpose in utilities, and that's been the case in the past, but it's very early on. We'll have to monitor that as we move throughout the winter.
Questions and comments on the budget report? Set one, another thing to put on your plate. When will we get, when will we start looking at revised facility fees for the new school? I think that's something we need to have in place.
Right.
Pretty quickly, especially when you have some of those dancing schools, et cetera. They make their reservations of events, for events way in advance, and we want to be marketing, that's another thing, how do we market the facility? But I guess that would be part of that whole proposal in terms of new fees for gym, for the auditorium, I guess, for the two main, but even the distance learning center.
Yeah, the question about it, I mean, look what recreation does with the turf field.
Right.
I mean, they, significantly.
I think build it and they will come.
Yes.
Yeah.
But we want to have the right fees. We don't want to be charging them $20 or $20 or whatever for the.
Which is we've done in the past.
Right. So, that's just something.
Okay.
You know, not right away, but something to start thinking about.
Okay.
Great, thanks, Mike.
Very good. Thank you.
Staffing, Kathy?
Yes. As Mr. Connolly just alluded to, we have a long-term substitute situation in the pupil personnel office. Our assistant pupil personnel services director, Martha Kroll, will be out on leave of absence for the remainder of this school year. So, I'm pleased to introduce Ms. Karen Walker. She has been hired as a long-term substitute to take Ms. Kroll's place. Ms. Walker is a retired principal of seven years for the therapeutic learning center that was run by the SEEM collaborative. And prior to her position at SEEM, she was a principal for seven years at the Capin School in the Thomas J. Curran Early Childhood Education Center located in Dedham. She also worked with Massachusetts Elementary School Principals Association and Future Management Systems as a mentor coach, and was a member of the Massachusetts Department of Education Curriculum Study Group that focused on writing the curriculum standards guides for science, technology, engineering, and history social science. So, we're very pleased to have someone of Ms. Walker's experience and expertise filling in for Mrs. Kroll during her leave of absence.
Okay, thank you. Any correspondents?
Yes, we have, oh.
Oh, actually, we have bids and donations.
Bids and donations, yes.
Two bids and donations to accept tonight, both from related to the same project. One is a $3,000 donation from the Middle School Parents Association used to purchase copies of the novel Wonder for a school-wide reading project. So, who can have a motion to accept with.
Move to accept with gratitude.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post unanimous. And then the second is a $2,500 donation from the North Reading Community Impact Team to also go toward purchase of the copies of the novel Wonder as a school-wide reading project.
Move to accept with gratitude.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Post unanimous. Subcommittee updates. Policy subcommittee, anything above what we moved tonight, Cliff?
I don't think so.
Okay. Finance plan team mainly, we started looking at the budget numbers for next year. They're a heck of a lot more cheery than they've been in the past many years. You know, hopefully, they'll go up from where they are now, but we're not starting in a hole, a big hole, like we, like we and the town usually has in the past four or five years.
In depot.
Right, no, it's in depot. And I think they're, the towns, on the town side, you know, they're still being really conservative with those numbers. So, it's not like they're saying, we're going to, you know, excise tax is going to up a million dollars, or a meals tax is going to go up X. They're still being conservative, so it's a positive start. I think that's, that was the main thing that came out of that meeting. Okay, and upcoming, we have an athletic subcommittee meeting tomorrow. Finance plan team meets on the 13th, policy subcommittee on the 18th, and I'm not even going to mention the communications subcommittee at this point. I believe also our new, because we don't have a date yet, and it's my fault. I believe also our new program is running on NORCAM?
Yes.
You might want.
Inside NRPS.
Inside NRPS?
Yes. It was, it was launched to YouTube.
Yep.
And the first, the inaugural episode was an interview with our two new central office administrators, Michael Connolly and Valerie Artie Flynn, Dr. Valerie Artie Flynn, who was our long-term sub for the PPS interim position. And so, we have two more shows that have been taped, and I'm not quite sure when they will be aired.
Soon. Soon, says Phil.
Soon is out of time.
It's a space.
And so, I believe the process will be that Phil from NORCAM will send them to me for review, and then I'll send them on to you so you can take a look at them prior to them being aired on YouTube. And I'm not quite, which channel are they on, Phil? Channel 22?
They're on your public channel. I think it's.
22.
26 and 99.
Oh, 26 and 99.
I think 26 Verizon and 99 Comcast.
So, it's on the educate, okay, so that's 99, yeah. And I do want to thank Phil for getting me my picture gesticulating into the opening credits for the show. I think that'll improve ratings significantly.
You're supposed to gesticulate on TV?
Yeah. Well, wow, legal gesticulating.
Can we, what are we going to word at this meeting?
What?
Let's just not use that word.
Gesticulating, okay.
Yes.
All right. That administrative report?
Yes, you have a supplemental administrative report. I took care of the largest item that was included. There are two other items, just for your information. The first one is Chartwell's Chefs to Schools program, and so, our food service director provided this information to you. On November 7th, Chartwell's regional chef, Barbara Kempkin, and chef director, Rob Holmes, visited the little school and the middle school to talk about, to talk to the children about the importance of fresh fruits and vegetables, and to showcase different types of foods as samples for them to try. So, you can see that pictures were taken, and those pictures were provided for you by Anna McGovern, our director, to give you a sense of what was taking place at those two schools. There will be more, and I believe, Mr. Bowers, you did attend the middle school.
I attended the middle school, and I can tell you that the meal that was cooked up there was delicious.
It was delicious. And I know there are plans for this program to be showcased at the other schools over the course of this school year, so I will let you know what those dates are when I am informed, in case you would like to also go and check it out. It looked really interesting. The second piece of information that's included in this supplemental report is the implementation of fingerprint-based state and national criminal records checks, also known as CFS. The DESD issued a memo, memo on November 14th that outlined next steps with the implementation